This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Break today. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular.
Your microphone.
Try that again. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, July 14th, 2025, 6:00 PM regular city council meeting. Could I have the roll call, please, ma'am?
Councilman Lance Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Jody Wilkinson.
Here.
Council President Charles Proctor.
Here.
Councilman Stephen Spina.
Here.
Councilman Ken Burgess.
Here.
Mayor Melanie Munson.
Here.
City Attorney Matthew Maggard.
Here.
City Manager William Poe Jr.
Here.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And for the, if you would all stand for the invocation, we're going to have Bishop Rich. Vividant? Vividant. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Please, young people, pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come for you tonight in the name of Jesus. We give you thanks and praise for all your mighty words. Thank you, Lord, that your word says that you'll never leave us and you'll never persecute us. Thank you for our mayor, the council, the city staff, first responders, hospital staff, the businesses, the churches, and the families within our community. Lord, touch the individuals that make our city the great city that it is. Touch our family and our friends that are in need tonight in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you for your lift for our leaders that you have raised up for our community. I pray blessings over them and their families in Jesus' name. I pray for this council meeting tonight that you will give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the agenda for them tonight. Help them to work together tonight in unity and serve with integrity. Give them strength and courage to do the right thing, to make right decisions for our community, and may every decision be honorable. May we act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognizing that we're all made in the image of God. We thank you once again, Lord, for all those who worked to make this place such a great city and we call home such a wonderful city. Bless this meeting tonight and everyone here in the mighty name of Jesus.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. All right. Thank you, sir. And it looks like the mayor, turn it over, no, excuse me, citizens comments. Is there anyone signed up that doesn't want to speak to something on the agenda that would like to speak to the council? Seeing none?
Got somebody back here.
Oh, oh, sorry. Come on up, sir. Give your, your name and address for the, for the record, please.
Can you push the button?
There you go. Perfect. My name is Mike Almeida. Address is 36500 Smithfield Lane. I'm a resident of the Abbott Square community, and I'm here tonight, I guess, to provide an update and maybe get an update on some of the ongoing construction issues that we have in our community. Recently, on June 24th, Lennar started some road repairs in our community. They repaired some curb and gutter on the side of my street, and they repoured brand-new concrete, and then they were supposed to repave the street. After replacing the curb and gutter, they decided that was when they were going to rip up the pavement to repave it. In that process, they destroyed the brand-new curb and gutter that they just repoured, and now that was on June 24th, and we're still waiting. Today is July 16th, I think, something like that, 14th, and they're still not paved. Originally, I think they told the city they were starting on June 1st, and it was going to be a five-week process. This part is still ongoing. There's another street on Beverly Hills Drive where they're supposed to be fixing some flooding issues that hasn't even started yet. So they keep, this is an ongoing process. There's other issues in the community that they still haven't started. I'm just trying to find out how long are they going to get to keep prolonging these projects? They put Abbott Square on the back burner while they continue to build all these other neighborhoods all over the county and just forgetting about us while we're paying a lot of money in our CDD fees, and nothing's being done.
Billy?
Yeah. So, council, I forwarded you all an email on Friday, I believe it was Friday afternoon. Let me get to it. Sorry. There was a response that I received today. As you know, I was in a training all day, so give me, bear with me one moment. So if you want me, I'll go through each item?
Let's do it. Didn't you say that we could pull the bond and just, let's just do it? Let's just rip the Band-Aid off?
Okay. Can I, can I, before we take that step, can I, let me read the response that I got today. So, the response was, good morning. Please see the comments noted and read below. We had, have every intention of completing this work as quickly as possible, but unfortunately delays beyond our control primarily from our contractors, subcontractors have impacted our timeline. If for any reason we are still unable to complete the work within the 30-day window, please feel free to proceed with pulling the bond. I would generally be curious to see whether the city or surety is able to execute the remaining work more quickly under those circumstances. At this point, Lennar has very few contractors willing to return to the site for punch work. Could we have explored more options? Possibly, but the vendor onboarding process alone typically takes a month or more. We've made every effort on our end to move this forward, but again, some of these challenges are simply beyond my control. Pushing harder on our contractors isn't likely to be productive. I'll keep you updated as things progress. Thank you. Their comments. So the outstanding issues that were remaining that we sent to them was that the 1,275 square foot of six-foot-wide concrete trail on the north side of Flat Street. The response was, I asked about this last week. Let me find out when it's, when it's getting done. I know it won't take even a whole day to complete, though. I regrade to expose the area around the stormwater discharge pipe in Pond 5 and remove any sediment and any sediment removal from the pipe as necessary. Contractor Stormwater Guy is meeting them out there tomorrow to discuss this. Again, once it's on their schedule, it won't take more than a week, and they are ready to start ASAP. Repair the sections of road on Smithfield Lane and Garden Wall Way. These tasks would be, would have already been completed, had the asphalt crew not destroyed the newly laid curbs, as Mr. Almeida had said. Curbs are being redone tomorrow, and Asphalt Crew is following them this week. Should be complete by the end of the week. Repair the curbing on Smithfield Lane and Garden Wall Way, same as the previous comment. Address the flooding on the Beverly Hills Drive. We're meeting with the engineer tomorrow morning to get on the same page with this work. It's hairy. I guess our contractor's sub still has questions. They're trying to avoid having to go back and repair after the repairs, but they are also ready to start ASAP, hopefully this week. In any case, this all, this and all the above tasks should be completed within the 30 days you're allotting us. So the email, if you remember, we told them they had 30 days to fix those outstanding issues. My recommendation is they have 30 days from, what is it, the 11th, which was Friday, to complete those tasks, and if they do not, then we will work through the process of pulling the bond.
So when is their deadline up?
Be August 11th?
Their original deadline.
Yeah, what was the first?
It was the first 30 days.
I don't, I'd have to go back and look at that. I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head.
I think for me, this is, this is just a continuation of the, you know, of, of the same old thing with them. And, you know, one of the things, I've had a talk with our city manager regarding this issue, and, you know, in my business, if you, if you don't deliver on the date that you're supposed to do, there's punitive damages typically. We don't have that arrangement with this, with this developer, and in fact, you know, they have assigned someone to work on this. The problem is it just, you know, and also in my business, if, if a subcontractor is not, is not performing, the general contractor terminates their agreement, hires someone else, you know, sues them, does whatever it takes, but the job still gets done with a different subcontractor. So Lennar is essentially telling the city, good luck. That's what that sounds like to me. And, you know, it's just indicative of the fact that they don't really care anything about our, our residents. They don't care about, you know, they don't care about us because it makes us look ineffectual, particularly to the 600 families that live, that are neighbors of Mr. Almeida. So, you know, I've been sort of peripherally involved in this project for, I don't know, two years almost now, and we just keep kicking the can down the road. And I've encouraged Mr. Poe and, and our city attorney to, to take the steps necessary to really sort of set the deadline, and then, and then we rip the Band-Aid off as, as Councilman, Councilman Spina so eloquently, but nothing.
I think you're just 30-day-ness to death here. We just need to do it. I agree. I agree with Councilman Spina. Do it, just do it now.
I would, too.
Can I also add? There's, there's another issue with, they recently finished their landscaping around at the end of my street where they planted 50-something trees along the property line of the CDD, and the other side of the property is private property. They planted these trees per the plans, but there's some adjacent trees from the next property over that hang over 30, 40 feet over into the CDD property, and they planted the trees directly underneath those trees.
Rishu and I have talked about this. If it's not in the plans, we can't enforce it, but you would think that.
But they should have cleared, when they cleared the land.
Staff's made a decision that they've met the plan, the landscaping plans are as per the plans, we've cleared that one as completed.
Whether it's a good job or not is another issue, but the, but the HOA has the option to do something about it. They can negotiate with the property owner to cut back the trees, do, you know.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, please.
Billy, if we pull the bond, then what's our process? How long would that be to implement that process? Would, obviously, it would be longer than 30 days, right?
It is going to, I assume so, yes. I've never pulled a bond, so I don't know.
I know the county did that with State Road 54, and it did cause more of a delay. I mean, it ended up getting done faster once they got started, but it does cause a delay, so.
At this point, I don't think the delay matters. It's already delayed so long, but I think they need to get some sort of punishment and hurt them by pulling the bond. I think that affects them in the future for.
As long as you know that if we pull the bond, then it still won't be done until.
Yeah, and we're, we're already waiting long enough, a little bit longer doesn't affect me really because it's already a long wait.
So the goal is to, to create inflict pain and not complete quickly?
Well, they don't have any sort of care for us, so.
Well, I mean.
No, it's to get the job done.
It's to get the job done.
They could do what it's supposed to do.
But if they're, if they're going to get it done.
But they haven't showed us they'd get it done.
They have, so if you look on there, there are things that have been completed.
But that.
Right? Sorry. So the curbs were repoured. They came in, clearly did a horrible job of milling the roadway up, and so they said road, road was milled up, they tore up the curbing, we have to redo the curbing because it's not acceptable. The roadway would already be done, leaving two items left. If, I mean, I don't know what we do as a staff if, if they, somebody comes in, messes up the job, and then says, okay, we're going to fix it. I don't know how they're not moving forward in, in addressing that issue. I mean, the curbs were poured.
All right.
Three weeks ago.
Let me say.
They milled it two weeks ago and, and destroyed the curve.
You don't want us to pull the bond right now. So let's do this. Let's say you, we'll give you, this is the final 30 days. You don't do it by August 14th or whatever, August 11th, then pull the bond.
We'll move through the process. That, yes, that is staff's recommendation.
You would rather us do that?
Yes.
Can I, can I just add that for the Smithfield repaving in the Garden Wall Way, well, Smithfield, I guess, they knew since January, when they got a Geotech report back, that they needed to repave. They've known since January. The flooding on Garden Wall Way, I've submitted emails to the CDE back in February of last year about that issue. The flooding on Beverly Hills, they've known about that since Tropical Storm Debbie last July. There's also flooding on Back Forty Loop that they haven't told us, they haven't started to do what they said they were going to do to remedy that, so.
Is that part of this?
Back Forty Loop, they agreed in an email that they were going to dredge out that 60-inch pipe where there was supposedly sediment that's causing the flooding. That hasn't been mentioned, but they agreed to that in an email, and that they haven't done that.
I'm looking at Todd. I don't, I don't know what you're talking about on the.
It's, I can, I'll forward to it. It's in one of the emails.
Is that part of the pipe that goes into Pond 5?
The 60-inch asphalt pipe that goes from Back Forty Loop into Pond 5, that's like 12 feet buried underground.
Yeah, that's when we said discharge, regrade and expose the area around the stormwater discharge pipe and pond pipe and any sediment removal from the pipe.
That's the 18-inch pipe that goes, that's a different pipe. That's, that's an 18-inch pipe that was buried, missing, and they just dug 20 feet into the pond to find it, and they were telling us the whole time that it was there, and they had to dig 20 feet into the wall, and she said it was buried because of erosion. 20 feet of dirt.
Could you put what you've just said to us in writing and give it to the city manager so he can tell them that?
What needs to be.
What needs to be done?
I'm not at work.
And you can get with Todd on that, and then, you know, I mean, would it help if we ask?
There's one more issue, too, and that is regarding the lack of sodding in, in one of the retention ponds. So one of the conversations that you and I had was, hey, it's green now. I mean, I drove through the site. I, I do on a regular basis, and, you know, but it looks like it's weeds. So the question I have, because I'm not a civil engineer, is, is that sort of, is that sort of substrate appropriate for percolation for a pond?
But I know that area looks like a pond because it's a depression, but in the plans and in the permit, that is not a pond. That was graded like that for, I don't know why they graded it like that, but that is not a pond, and according to the plans, that should be sodded.
So it is green, and the, the grate that is there, there is sod that is around that grate. It's dead.
But that whole area was never sodded.
What's that?
That whole depression area was never sodded, and you, you can tell just, it looks like weeds. When you go there, you can see where the grass was sodded and where there, there's not. It's weeds.
Is the HOA going to treat that area every day and keep the weeds out of it?
It's the CDD, but.
Is the CDD going to keep it clean and, and fertilize it and?
There's a lot of grass in the neighborhood. All the grass surrounding the Bulbisaq isn't irrigated.
Staff's made the, made the determination that that pond meets the plans, and it has ground cover.
It was never sodded. I, I work from home. I live right next to it.
Okay. Staff has made the determination that there's ground cover and it is stabilized.
It's weeds, but, okay.
It is going to be weeds, and it'll be weeds in the future as well, right? Because you're not going to fertilize it, and you're not going to put weed killer on it.
All right. All right. Hey, excuse me. Why don't you put all this in writing and give it to Billy and the city manager? And we don't, we're giving it, we're giving him the 30 days, I guess. Is that what we all agree on? Give him the 30 before we pull the bond?
And everything on the list.
Everything on the list.
So everything on your list, get it to him, and then.
Get the A-team.
And we'll get, we'll all get a copy.
Okay.
And then we'll move forward, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just carry out that, that everything on the list is things that are tied to the bond. I don't know what's all on his list of punch list items, so make sure that it's applicable to the bond.
Well, that's why I asked him to give it to Billy, so Billy knows what's applicable. And then they can try to negotiate the rest of it with whoever if they can ever get this thing flipped over. All right. Moving on, we have 13, oh, no, excuse me. Mayor. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Almeida. Thank you. And thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Was there any other citizens that wanted to speak? Seeing none?
Thank you. We'll see if we can do this this way. So Mr. Patel owns the Microtel Inn and Suites, and I saw some of the amazing things that his team did this last year for our community, and they were awarded some great recognition. So I wanted to make sure that we talked about those recognitions. Thing that he won't tell you is his parents came down from New York at Thanksgiving time to feed all the people that were displaced living in the hotel. From the hurricanes. So when you look at this feast, it isn't just a feast like you and I had. His mama went. It was, it was amazing. It was a big deal, and it was a lot of people that helped. I'm sure it wasn't just her, but I just wanted to recognize what they're doing, so. Whereas, Microtel Inn and Suites Zephyr Hills by Wyndham, under the leadership of owner Neil Patel, has demonstrated a commitment to excellence in hospitality and community service. And whereas, at the recent Wyndham Conference, Microtel Inn and Suite Zephyr Hills was honored with two distinguished awards. The Wyndham Best of Award, only one of three presented in the state of Florida, and the Hero Award, recognizing outstanding compassion and service in the wake of recent hurricanes. And whereas, during the time of crisis, Neil Patel and his dedicated team opened their doors to FEMA evacuees from mid-October to mid-January, providing not only shelter but a sense of belonging, serving catered Thanksgiving meal for over 110 guests, and partnering with local churches to host a community Christmas celebration. And whereas, Microtel also actively supports, supported the local business and civic community through engagement with the East Pasco Chamber of Commerce and community initiatives, including tennis center events. And whereas, special recognition is extended to housekeeping team member Anira.
Quevra.
Quevra. I knew I was going to butcher that, who was named one of only three global finalists for Wyndham's Housekeeping Hero Award. To the front desk manager Caitlin Perez and the entire Microtel team for their dedication to service and hospitality. And whereas, the city of Zephyr Hills is proudly, proud to be home to a community, to community-driven businesses like Microtel Inn and Suite Zephyr Hills that exemplify the highest standards of care, professionalism, and civic partnership. Now, therefore, I, Melanie Bar Monson, by the virtual of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Zephyr Hills, do hereby recognize Microtel Inn and Suites of Zephyr Hills by Wyndham for their outstanding achievement and unwavering commitments to serving our residents, visitors, visitors and community.
Thank you so much. It's an honor.
Come over this way.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're going to have PHSC team come on up. Whoever you have here. Did you have some more people here? They had to go. All right. I'm Melanie. Nice to meet you. So we're excited for this proclamation, too. So this is exciting news. Whereas, Pasco Hernando State College, founded in 1967, has played a vital role in expanding higher education and athletic achievement in East Pasco, in the East Pasco County and beyond, fostering opportunities for student athletes to excel both academically and on the field. And whereas, on May 31st, 2025, the PHSC Bobcats baseball team captured the 2025 NJCAA Division Two Baseball World Series championship in Enid, Oklahoma, defeating the number-two seed Pearl River Community College by a score of 11 to 7. Whereas, this remarkable win marks the first national title for PHSC's athletic history and was earned through determination, discipline, and unforgettable performances, including back-to-back grand slams in the seventh inning by Grant Jordan of Jesuit High School and Brandon DeFer, DeFue, DeFue, from Land O' Lakes High School, shifting momentum and securing victory for the Bobcats. And whereas, the team's success was further solidified by outstanding efforts from pitcher Michael Savarese of Hernando High School, who recorded eight strikeouts in 6.2 innings, and Holden Wade of Sickle's High School, who closed the game with 2.1 hitless score innings. And whereas, Brandon DeFer was named Tournament MVP and Outstanding Offensive Player, and head coach and athletic director Lyndon Coleman was awarded Coach of the Tournament. And whereas, the NJCCA, NJCAA recognized four PHSC players, Grant Jordan, Fano Cruz of Vera High School, Bryce Habdu, Abduda of, thank you, Steve, of Canterbury High School, and Gavin Zasenbracher of A3 Academy as members of the all-tournament team. And whereas, this championship exemplifies the values of sportsmanship, excellence, excellence, and perseverance that defines PHSC and inspired, and PHSC inspire pride throughout the Zephyr Hills community and beyond. Now, therefore, I, Melanie Bar Monson, by the virtual of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, do hereby extend our sincere gratulations and recognition to the Pasco Hernando State College Bobcats baseball team for their extraordinary accomplishments in 2025 NJCAA Division Two Baseball National Champion. Thank you. Thanks, Liz. I'm a Ph.D. Yeah, that's okay. That's all right. So not a problem. Stay. So thank you.
Y'all didn't even know they were the Bobcats, did you?
They weren't when I went there.
We have swearing in. We have swearing in of Officer Verance.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Derek Brewer, Police Chief, City of Zephyr Hills. And I don't want to introduce one of our new officers, Greg Verance. Greg's journey started with us, he's a sponsorship, so he started with us in in January. So, and he's still got about twelve more weeks to go before he's let go. So it's a long journey from academy to getting out on your own. But we're very happy to have Greg and his professionalism really shined in the academy where some of the other agencies were trying to take him from us, but he stayed true. So. But come on up, Greg. So Greg was born and raised in the city of Miami, Florida. He brings a strong sense of community and purpose to his role in law enforcement. A two thousand and six high school graduate, he recently earned his law enforcement certification from the Law Enforcement Academy at Pasco Hernando State College, where he proudly served as a classmate of Class One Twenty-Six. Known for his integrity, compassion, and dedication, Officer Verance is not only a devoted husband and father, but also passionate about public service. He is driven by a heartfelt mission to make a positive and lasting difference in the lives of those he serves throughout the Zephyr Hills community. And I'm loving your, your, the little one shirt there. That's right. So I'm gonna bring his wife up now so we can pin that badge on him and then swear. Yeah, that's good.
Is that your son?
It's your time. It's Penny.
Trying to push that pin to the collar stays.
Raise your right hand. Ready? Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States of America in the state of Florida and the city of Zephyr Hills against all enemies domestic and foreign. And I will bear true faith loyalty and allegiance to the same. And that I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police officer of Zephyr Hills of which I am about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations.
Whoops, it's gone already. That's okay.
I stayed standing for the picture. There you go. I'm standing out there.
Welcome to the team. We're excited to have you with us.
Amen.
Welcome. Thank you.
All right. Well, I guess we will continue on. We have thirteen consent agenda items. We can pass them all at once or any council member can pull any of them for discussion.
And, Mr. President, could I pull, uh, two and three, please?
You wanna pull two and three? All right, we'll pull.
Motion to.
We need that in a motion form.
Motion to to pull items two and three.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we have one point three to one point thirteen. I'll entertain a motion.
One point four.
Move approval, Mr. President.
Second. I have a motion in a second from.
Motion was from Lance Smith.
Items one, one and one-four to thirteen.
One, point one, and then one point four through one point one-three.
Everything but two and three.
Yeah. Oh, you pulled two and three.
Yeah.
Okay, one point, I'm sorry. I have a motion in a second. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And and Lance Smith made the motion. We need to help our clerk down here because she doesn't know everybody yet. Okay.
All right, um, we have some discussion for one.
Yes, Mr. President, I I just had pulled those items because I just looked and uh, the one item, both of them are projects and what, um, took, it's forty-eight months to complete. So if we could start with that one, and I and I I prethiced this by letting the city manager know I was gonna pull these items as well. So, I mean, it 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 just takes too long for us to do projects, so I just wanted to pull it and ask why. Who was in charge and why?
Uh, so item one point two, that is a public works project. This project, if you remember, two thousand and twenty-one or twenty-two, I believe, we received funding to do phase two of the tennis center. Once we got the design and we, it was two thousand and twenty-one. Once we got the agreement was, which was, I believe, August of twenty-one, we started the design. We received the engineer's estimate, cost estimate, and it was well, well over budget.
When did we receive the cost estimate?
I don't have that date.
Could we get a timeline on everything, please?
I can. Um, and so the design began, was over budget. We went back to the state, asked for additional funds or asked for time extension. Um, and then the following fiscal year, we asked for additional funds. Rep. Maggard and Senator Burgess worked to get us additional funds. And then, um, that following year, the governor, before it was finalized, the governor pulled those funds, which caused another redesign to go back to a smaller unit. Construction began and Shane, I know you sent this to me, but it was twenty, late twenty, early twenty-four?
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. The indoor tennis or the, yeah, the indoor tennis facility, I've looked at two different projects. The original agreement was Ju-, uh, July first, two thousand and twenty-one. And like city manager Poe mentioned, we had delays with funding and design. We had electrical issues that we had, uh, an electric line run across the property that we had to relocate with Duke and it just, these projects, while it seems like a long time, it takes a long time to have your design, your construction, your permitting, the actual time of the construction. All of these big projects that we do, and I'll use City Hall, for example, this was a four-year project from design to final completion. SVB Tennis Center, three years from design to final completion. And this is another example of that, of delays that were, you know, beyond our control, but.
Do you think it could have been done quicker?
Well, I think that with the CM or CMAR agreements that are gonna be on the agenda tonight, they're on the agenda. I think that's gonna help speed us up because you think about every project we do, we have to do RFQ for design. Get a design team on board. Everything's gotta be approved by council. And then after the design team's on board, then you have to do RFQ for the CMAR. And it just stacks up time, but I think with having these on-call CMAR contractors, we can look at their portfolio, pick the right contractor for the job and speed things up.
Well, I I hope so because, I mean, even with delays, four years?
Well, I mean, I think one thing that that comes to mind is just the the steel, getting the steel for this project and metal buildings happened at a time where it was unprecedented, delays in in construction were unprecedented. And I'm not saying that that's the only thing, but anytime we have to deal with Duke. But let me ask you a question. Was there any way we could have known that the electric line was there and did we not take steps in advance to get that relocated?
Well, that property was deeded to the city.
Ah.
And unbeknown to us, we didn't know that line that feeds the the well apartments cut right across the center of our property. That was a delay. We had to, I think it was a thirty thousand dollar cost to relocate the power line that we didn't know about. So.
But the the bigger delays were, was the funding because it came in over budget and then we had to go to the state, get the appropriate, additional appropriate, or, excuse me, appropriation for additional dollars. That was awarded to the city, so we started back down the design. I had to not redesign it, but had to pick up the original design and and finish that. And then the hurricanes hit down south and the governor pulled that money. So then we had to shelf that design, go back to the smaller design. And that's where the the big delays were on this project. Was the, was the funding because we were given, we appropriated four point six-six million dollars. When the engineer's estimate came in, I think we were closer to seven to do the twenty-one thousand square feet courts and and the associated parking. And that's what delayed this project. You know, everything else moved slowly, but there were times where we sat for six months waiting for an answer from the state to say.
Right. Had to do a total redesign on it.
Right.
Pretty much. But the good news is, is it's substantially complete as of June tenth last month. That it, we're at substantial completion, we're knocking out the punch list. We have some, um, long lead items like the flooring for the gymnasium that's supposed to be here next week. And the whole purpose of this extension that we got was to close out all of the invoicing for the subcontractors from the general contractor. Just, it just bought us a little bit of time. In fact, I didn't even really mention to the contractor that we had an extension until later, so that wouldn't delay the project anymore. Kind of kept that ace in my pocket.
Yeah, I I mean, I I I just would like us to be be more efficient. I would like us to be the one phone call when the contractor gets it or the consultant or the engineer or the or the architect that like, oh, my gosh, we gotta get this thing done for this guy. This guy's bugging the heck out of me. I I mean, I I I just saw him build a seven-hundred-unit development behind us in the, like, the time it took us to do that building. So I'm just like, why? How can we get quicker?
Well, and the reality is, is that it behooves the architect and the contractor to get the job done as quickly as possible. The longer it sits in the office, the more money you lose. So, so, you know, the reality is, is that it's, you know, it sounds to me like it's up beyond our control.
So do you think forty-eight months is acceptable?
No, I think that that took an inordinate amount of time, but I don't think that that's indicative of a metal building project. It is when we're dependent on state for fun.
Right. I mean, I agree. I agree.
Well, I just wanted to bring up that I remember this started all before I got elected, so a lot of that I'm not familiar with. But I do remember getting the revised construction document or the contract for it. And I remember being told we would be done by June thirtieth because that's when the grant was due, the grant was due. So that was a year or and more, more that we were told basically we would be done June thirtieth, that that was the the time.
Last year.
Yeah.
Of this year. Oh.
Yeah, so it was, so the project with substantial completion was June tenth. The grant ended on June thirtieth, so to be able to, so yes, there was a delay there. And and so we asked for a few additional days or thirty additional days. I think they granted us sixty to be able to do all the close-out documents, but the substantial completion was done by June thirtieth.
Well, I think just to kind of back up the whole, and it's apples to oranges, I realize, but in a different timeframe, but they built the Empire State Building in just slightly over a year. And I'm sure they had delays with things and they had, they were building a downtown city, bringing steel stuff there. We have got to find ways to increase the, I mean, to move up our projects and get them done in a timely fashion, whatever it takes.
Well, because we're penalized by the cost of money gets more and more expensive. So we're, our dollars are buying, our our taxpayers' dollars are buying less and less every year. So as those, you know, as these projects are delayed, our our city and our and our residents are the ones suffering.
Well, Councilman Smith is right. I mean, these projects, and not just these two, but others have taken quite a lot longer than they were. And and sometimes there are excuses why, but I mean, like Councilman Burgess says, we we've got to become more efficient and I don't see why we can't with with making these projects go on time. And we're not blaming you, I'm just saying.
No, and so I will, I will reiterate, I will sit here and take the blame for any project that's overdue. This project was delayed because of the funding constraints from the appropriations that we redesigned this building three different times, going from bigger to smaller, back to bigger, back to smaller. So it is no fault of staff that this project took so long. It was a funding mechanism that we did not have the money and it caused us to redesign things. Like I said, I'll, I'll sit and take the blame for any project that has gone over. This one, I cannot allow staff to take the blame on this one or myself because it was a funding issue.
And what I'm sitting here thinking is, the projects we have going right now, City Yard, how much is it gonna come in over budget and how much longer is that gonna take? That's what's going through my back of my mind. How can we, okay, think about a way that we can do something within our budget?
Right.
We can want, I I would love to live, not, not now, but in the wintertime on the beach. But I don't have the budget to do so. So pare down the the projects to meet your anticipated budget. If it's, if you know it's gonna come in double, then then have, you you know, understand what I'm saying? Don't, don't overestimate the amount of money we have available. So, I mean, I I it's it's just a recurring theme and I I'm getting tired of it. So, anyway, with that, I I appreciate it. I appreciate the explanation, too.
I've got two bright notes about this project. Note number one is the state of Florida paid for it.
True.
Note number two is we didn't exceed the guaranteed maximum price. We stayed within budget.
That, yep.
Thank you.
Not for you, really, but I was just thinking, you know, last week I went over the, some of the capital budget problems with you. And I'll bring this, I was gonna bring it up during the workshop, really, but, you know, I think sometimes maybe we're a little over ambitious. We have too many balls in the air. And, you know, I had suggested to the city manager last week that, you know, we have, we we wanna do a lot. I mean, we have needs and we wanna serve the community and we wanna build sidewalks and extend water lines and build parks and all this stuff, but the next couple of years, we we're gonna have to focus really on the City Yard and Zephyr Park and then pick the smaller things that we can handle at the same time. Because I think just sometimes we have too many balls in the air and it's just hard to get everything done. We have a small staff. And I think that's part of the problem.
And I think a lot of, I I get a lot of complaints from citizens saying, you know, why is it taking, you know, we we were gonna do Zephyr Park quite a while ago and I'm not blaming anyone, but it just seems like it, they all take longer and longer. So, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we can try to make it more efficient and get done quicker. All right, I'll.
Thank you. Thank you. I move to approve this item.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Was that one point two and one point three?
That was one point two.
Just one point.
So one, one point three.
We got the motion.
I got a motion for item one point two.
And we have a second from Jody Wilkson.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed? None?
None.
Okay.
And and then one point two, it was, or one point, let me get my numbers. One point three, thank you. It's the same question. I mean.
So item one point three, in the memo, it says that it was approved in twenty-two. The agreement, the funding agreement from the state was actually approved in, I believe it was February twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. The extension that we have now, the project, the pipe, uh, is in the ground, both water and sewer is in the ground. We're waiting on testing. We have another project, Lift Station Thirty-seven, um, that is up at the corner of Pretty Pond and Otis Allen, or, excuse me. It's at the corner of Twenty-third and Otis Allen. And there's been delays on that project, um, with CSX, with where the lines are. That, that, two separate projects, but they're tied together. So Lift Station Thirty-seven, uh, we are close on that, I believe. They're waiting on, they did, did all the testing this week and should be handing over ownership or operation of it. ownership or operation of it, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. By Lift Station 37 not being completed, the project, item 1.3, we cannot do the testing to run the utility, can't run the, the stuff through the lines to test it. So we've asked for an extension, one to, to ensure that we have enough time to be able to get the lines connected to 37, test them and then get the funding in play, or excuse me, get all the documentation in place so that we can be reimbursed for the agreement.
Um, yeah. And did we know that that lift station was going to be part of this?
So we knew it was a part of it. We didn't know that the issues, the issues that were having with the contractor were going to occur. And it's been that the, that's, that project was slated to be done, yeah, about six months ago, maybe a little bit longer than that. There's been delays and some trenching that had to be done at CSX. Generator that was supposedly at a yard and then was not there and was never ordered. So we're dealing with a separate contractor on Lift Station 37. That's delayed the project that you have in front of you.
So is the contractor, is it somebody we've used in the past and they're just having temporary struggles? Or is it, you know, we use the lowest bidder and we got what we got and you know?
So Station 37, that's the first time we've used that contractor. And so we don't.
We won't use them.
Is that the last time?
Sir?
Is that the last time?
I'll reserve the right to, at this time. Yeah.
How will they fix their own problem?
Great. Yeah. So like I said, contractor on 37 is causing the issue on 1.3. But the lines are in the ground, just waiting to be able to make that connection to, to test and get the clearance from DEP.
I have a question about this. This is the one, I think the Kosick and Fort King Sewer Project is the one that we're waiting on the test before you can go back in and repair the cuts to the roads coming out, like Fairview Heights and things, places like that.
Correct.
So that's, that can't be done yet because you haven't done the testing? Or you're talking about testing at the lift station?
It's testing of the, of the lines to make sure all the pressures and everything holds, correct? All right. I see Ed shaking in the back, but I know what I'm talking about.
Then they will come back and do the, because I had a complaint and I said, oh, no, that's county, that's county. He said, no, it's not. So, okay. All right. All right. Thanks.
Now, why couldn't they go ahead and close the road up while we're waiting on this lift station?
Well, the concern is that if, once they test it, if there is an issue there, they're going to have to rip it back up. I mean, so we, I mean, I guess we could cover it over and then if there is an issue there, we just have to rip the road back up to, to redo it. I mean, we're hoping that, sorry, I'm hoping, we are hoping that in the next couple, two, three weeks, Lift Station is ours and all the testing can occur. Right?
So when do you think this will be done? It says 2026, October 31st of next year.
I apologize, the department head is not, he's on vacation this week. So I don't know that I have an answer for that.
This says till next year.
No, it asks for 12, it asks for 12 months.
12 months.
Yeah, you might go fix those cuts in the road before then, October.
The project, the project should be completed. If everything goes right, I would assume should be done by the end of the calendar year.
By when though?
End of the calendar year, so December.
So around six months.
Jessica, she might have something on the finance end.
Do you think it's supposed to say 25, October of 25?
Name and address, please.
Jessica Carter, Assistant Finance Director for the City of Zephyr Hills. Since I've taken over kind of grant administration, a lot of the grants that we've been dealing with, they like to overextend. They don't like to do these things and I don't blame them, neither do I. So sometimes they'll overshoot just so that we don't have to come back and do this again, which totally works for me. So even though the grant agreement says October of 2026, they are giving us more than enough time to get everything submitted and close out. You know, that's just for grant purposes. That's not any indication of when the project is to be completed. That's just a goal and they set that way far out just to give us plenty of time. Because we don't want to do amendment one, two, three, four, five, and six, like we've had to do on the tennis center. So this will just kind of overshoot it just to give us plenty of time to get all the paperwork and, you know, it's just more documentation.
Okay. And both, just as a note, both, both projects that we're talking about, item one, 1.2, 1.3, they're both the state appropriations. The first one was through DEO, I believe, and the second one is DEP. So even though there's both state agencies, the way they handle amendments and, and contracts are a little bit different and then, and how the wording and things that get into those agreements.
Yes, they let, they all have their own paperwork, their own, their own forms, their own process. So that's fun to keep track of all that.
To make it longer, yeah.
Yes. But yes, we have 4.66 for our, for the tennis center and we have 3.5 million for item 1.3. So that is 100% funded. So some of our other grants are 50/50 or 80/20, stuff like that, but this one is 100%.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification too. And, and I just, I mean, I, I just want us to get more efficient. I, I think we can. I think there's ways we can do it. And like Councilman Wilkson said, delays cost money and material cost. And maybe there was another grant we could have got if we'd had this thing closed out. I don't know. I don't know, but it's possible. So let's just, and, and after this, look at it and say, well, did we do everything we could or where, where could we have got this faster? Where, where was the, where was the log jam? And start backing up. So if we don't learn from our mistakes, that's our fault, you know, so.
Absolutely.
We'll keep making.
But thank you.
To piggyback on what Shane said, I mean, just the bidding and the RFP process alone, not only do you have to advertise it, which could take a week to get into the paper, but then it's advertised for 30 days. And then you have to do the review and site and, you know, could be site tours and stuff like that. So you could be anywhere from 30 to 90 days before you even select somebody, you know, so that alone, just the bidding process could take a while.
Right.
And then even though we're going to have some CMARS on file, you know, for smaller projects, a lot of these grants that we're getting will require us to go out to bid regardless. So having a C Mar on file will only work for certain extents. So you're looking, you know, that, just the bidding process alone slow, could slow the process down, even though we go as fast as we can.
Right.
So that way we don't delay, you know, purchasing and the finance side is not delaying in any way.
Right. And, and I think we need to think about it, just do the screening on these subs because somebody we haven't used called two or three or four or five people. I don't know if we do that. But I would call them and say, hey, you got any problem with them? Not like one that happened five years ago, like the last 90 days. What's going on with this contractor? So I mean, I think we, we got to get more efficient of that.
Yeah.
Yes, I do believe our engineers that we have on file that review all of our bid responses, they handle all of the.
Well, I wouldn't trust an engineer or consultant. I think somebody ought to, our staff needs to call.
And Mr. President, if I could, so it's interesting, these last two or three projects we've just talked about, including Lennar and that, you know, we are dealing with Duke, SWF MUD, the county agencies and the state agencies, we have the funding, then we have DEO, DEP, CSX. So all of those agencies we're coordinating with, and a lot of those are creating some of these delays. So maybe it helps us to identify the very front end of the project, have a checklist and say, okay, who are we going to need to deal with? Who do we have relationships with? Who can we, who can we call and say, we have this project coming down the pipe, we want to make sure we get ahead of any issues that you might have about this project. And they do a quick search on the property providers off, or whatever their G S, their, their GIS imaging. And they say, okay, here are the issues we have with that site. So there, there is a way to be more proactive. That's what we do in the public sector all the time, is you identify who, where the bottleneck usually is going to be. That's just my suggestion.
Yeah. So I will say that all of our projects, we have a pre-construction meeting and, and the idea is to be able to, sorry. I don't know how to silence my watch. Yeah. We do have pre-con meetings on all the projects and we try to bring in the, the players, Frontier, CSX, anybody that, that we think is going to be impacted. You know, for instance, and I'll, I think Councilman Ben and I had the conversation, Sixth Avenue, the, the extension of Sixth Avenue, or sorry, not Sixth Avenue, South Avenue. The design was done, we go out to bid and from design to construction, company called Baduko came into town and their requirement was that they needed a gas line. And so a gas line was run from 301 all the way along South Avenue on the north side, all the way to their plant. Well, here comes BRW to extend the roadway and to extend the, the sewer line. And guess what's right in the middle of the way, right in the middle of where we need to put our, our sewer line is the gas line. So that project is at, not, I shouldn't say at a halt, but it's being, the sewer line is being redesigned. And I saw an email that went out today asking, is there any way you can cap the gas line? Let us put in the sewer line and come back and, and replace the gas line, which, oh, oh, that's this project. Oh, sorry. So project number two, Sixth Ave, that you see out here, same issue, design's done, gas line comes in between design and construction and we have the same conflict. So that, those types of things happen, but you know, staff does, does have pre-con meetings with the contractor and then any you know, entities that, that have utilities in that construction area. So.
Any more questions?
No.
I move approval to this item, Mr. President. So two more comments.
Motion from Councilman.
I'll second.
And a second from Councilman Burgess. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Business item number two.
I'll take it, Mr. President. Business item 2.1 is a second reading of ordinance number 1501-25. Ordinance of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, establishing a new temporary moratorium on the consideration of new residential applications for annexations, land use modifications, rezoning, major plan unit development amendments, conditional uses or variances for property over one acre, not to exceed 12 months, provided for conflicts, exemptions, severability, expiration and an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there any citizens that want to speak to this issue? Seeing none, is there anyone on the staff that wants to speak to this? Any questions from the council or all entertained motion?
Yeah, I just have one. I mean, I know we've been pushing this along. What's the long-term plan to resolve? I, I'm assuming this is our water issue.
Sorry, this is the water issue. The conversation that, that's going to occur and, and dollars that are in the budget, kind of the, the items or the areas that we're looking at right now is there's a, I think, Day City Business Center came before council several months ago, probably over a year ago now. So we're looking at that. And then there's, you know, the opportunity or potential to hook into Pasco County. Honestly, those two seem like the most viable at the moment. As we bring projects in, once a moratorium's lifted, if there are projects that have wells, very similar to Evans Orsi, we try to get those wells. But we have to look at where the additional water is coming from. And at the moment, it, Day City Business Center and connecting into Pasco County. We had a pass, a conversation with Pasco County. What was relayed to us was that they could provide us up to a million and a half gallons a day without impacting their system. And now that will require a connection. Obviously, we'd have to connect to their lines, but we would have to treat the water because they treat their water differently than we do. But that's, that is planned up in the, in the next coming, or excuse me, in the upcoming budget to, to be able to do that study and figure out what the best route is to get that approval. Everything was submitted, my understanding, to SWF MUD and the goal is to have our WUP modification on their agenda. And then once we get that approval, we'll be notified and then that'll be forwarded to council.
Is there, I mean, because I know Newport Ritchie is part of the Tampa Bay Water Group. Is it possible for us to join the Tampa Bay Water Group and bypass Pasco County?
Ah.
What?
That is Pasco.
Yeah, but he's saying, he's saying contract, he's saying contract directly with Tampa Bay Water opposed to going to Pasco.
But they're in Pasco, Pasco County's in Tampa Bay Water.
Yep, Newport Ritchie is too.
Yeah, but he's saying, like, take, like, basically cut out the middle. I don't know the answer to that question. I, I would have to do some research. I don't know the answer to that.
Pasco County belongs to Tampa Bay Water. So I think if we were taking Pasco County water, it would be Tampa Bay Water. And we didn't want to do that because it's a lot more expensive. I mean, we wanted our own little pool.
Right.
But, but it's, I think it's one of the same. I think if you connect to Pasco, you're connecting to Tampa Bay Water.
But I guess my question is, why is Newport Ritchie?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. So.
Yeah. So I think the question in front is, is would we be able to contract with Tampa Bay Water, get it directly from them? And it'd be cheaper than Pasco buying it from Tampa Water and then us buying it from Pasco? And I don't know that answer. I don't know where lines are and so.
I mean, because, and when I was looking, I just looked at Tampa Water. I'm like, well, Newport Ritchie is part of it, their city. So.
Tampa is, St. Pete is, Pinellas is, but, but I think, all right.
Yeah, I don't know.
If we can get it cheaper that way, it'd be something to pursue. The other, the other thing is, we had talked at one time about putting a coalition together with Day City and some of the other municipalities. I don't know if that would go anywhere either. But I think what it happens is when you go to permitting on something like that, it gives you a little more clout because Tampa Bay Water doesn't have any trouble, I'm assuming, getting water. I, I don't know that answer.
Well, that's because they have alternative source, resources. They have the, they have the surface treatment plant, the well, I guess. And then, and then they also have groundwater. But yeah, I just always thought they're, they're, it's all one in the same, I think.
Right. So, I mean, I just think I'd be curious to find out how that operates. And if we could, if we said, hey, here's our pumping permit, how much will we get if we join the coalition?
Right.
Now, there'd have to be some, I'm sure there'd have to be some money paid for transmission.
That's what I was going to say. You, you're, you still might be using Pasco County water, you know, infrastructure to get the water from point A to point B.
But, but I mean, at least explore it. Maybe it would be cheaper. I don't know. Or maybe it's not worth it.
It doesn't hurt to look into it.
I know an, an initial talks is the connection to Pasco would be supplemental to what we have, not giving up what we have in, in supplying 100% through Tampa Bay. So it'd be supplemental to our current permits.
And that's another thing to look at. You're right. That's exactly right. So, I mean.
But the challenge is the treatment of the, of, is the treatment of any of these water systems compatible with the way we do things? That's always going to be.
I, I think that we need to get geared up to do that.
Yeah.
Because I think it's going to happen. I, I don't, I don't think there's a question.
Well, if we go to Pasco, then we would have to because they treat it with chlor mines, chlor, chloramines, and we treat it with chlorine.
What's the difference?
I, you're asking the wrong person.
What is this, sir? Sorry to make you get up.
I know we pour chlorine like you pour in your pool. We pour that in our water and cleans it and we send it out.
CJ Pinnell, Water Superintendent, City of Zephyr Hills. Yeah, Pasco County does treat with chloramines, which is chlorine and ammonia. We would have to basically dechlorinate the water and chlorinate it again to get it back to free chlorine. Correct. Yes, sir.
It's just a little.
We don't want to go to that if at all possible. We really don't because they have to do free chlorine burns, which everybody calls in chlorine complaints and everything when that happens. I believe they have to do that twice a year, if I'm not mistaken, but. But yes, we like the water the way it is. We'd like to keep it that way. So.
Drink it out of the tap.
Correct.
And I agree, we do need to keep it, but we better find another source. If we want to keep it, we better, we best find a source.
So Tampa Bay Water, I, I do believe is separate from Pasco County Utilities. They're two separate entities altogether. Pasco County Utilities does operate plants in our area and is pretty close for us to tie into. Tampa Bay Water, I believe, I, don't quote me on this, but it's a long ways to try to get a transmission line from them to us. And we would have to go through Pasco County.
Yeah.
Systems to get to us, which would be really expensive.
User fee like the electric lines.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah. And I, I think we're, there's a couple of points that we're a few hundred feet.
Correct.
You know, less than 1,000 feet from the county.
Yeah, I think once, I think one was.
39 and Chancy.
Road and 39.
And the others at Island and, and Simons.
Island and Simons.
Well, and it might be these new developments, you know, that that's part of the, that they're not, they don't become part of our service area. They don't become our water customers.
We have that with the Silverado is a county utility system and not Zephyr Hills. It's in the city limits, but it's Pasco County.
We do city garbage.
Right.
Which is really strange.
And I just think we have to start, I mean, these moratoriums, we've got to figure long-term solutions. We, we got to figure long-term solutions or we just don't grow, you know, that's the choice. So.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing, what, that's a whole nother discussion because it's going to grow around us regardless. So if we, if we want to control it, we need to find some more water.
It's growing right now. You're right. All right. Any more discussion? I'll close the public hearing.
Did he ask her?
And I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number 1502-25 on its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from.
I think you said 1502. It's 1501.
1501-25.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilman Spina.
I'll second. Okay.
Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Item 2.2, Matthew?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 2.2 is renewal. Is a second reading of ordinance number 1502-25. Ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, related to medical marijuana treatment centers adopting findings of fact, providing definitions imposing a new temporary moratorium on the opening of any new medical marijuana treatment centers not to exceed 12 months, providing for severability repealer and an effective date. And this is the second reading. This is a public hearing.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing.
I've spoken to.
Oh, you had more to add?
I had, I had spoken to counsel for Mr. Pettenato today and they've requested that the city separate cultivation regulation and process dispensary regulation. But you know, those discussions, we, this, this request was brought to me today. Mr. Pettenato is not able to be at this meeting and requested that we continue the second reading of this. And I expressed that that was likely unlikely to happen at this point. But it's a temporary moratorium for us to explore long-term development regulations and that he's welcome to continue reaching out to city staff to talk about his proposed project during this. It doesn't prevent that. We're just trying to set some regulations in it. They were going to email me some things to look at today, but you know, I think that it was just too last minute for me to, to be able to dig into it. So I'm happy to review it and talk to staff about it. But part of this is temporary to be put in place so that we can explore exactly what we want to do. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that since that was relayed to me to request that continuance.
So we could delay this like for two weeks to the next meeting if we wanted?
I, I mean, yes, you could renotice it. But the problem is, is that July 22nd is when the current one expires, the current moratorium. So we would need to approve it tonight to keep a moratorium in place without a break in it.
Let, let me ask you a question, Matt. Just because you have a 12-month moratorium, we're trying to come up with a solution. Come up with a solution.
It's 12 months. It's not to exceed 12 months.
Then we could cut it short.
It could be two months. It could be five months. It could be 12 months. If, if staff decided, we don't know what we want to, you know, city rather decided, we don't know what we want to do with dispensaries, but we're okay with just cultivation. And, and I deem that to be legally acceptable to split the two, which I still have doubts about. Doesn't prevent us from coming and amending this ordinance and, and adopting regulations on cultivation if that's what the city wants to do. But you know, I've served your pleasure. So I just need direction.
Well, and that's the case on all moratoriums. They're usually not to exceed.
Exactly.
So anytime during that thing, and the idea of them is to try and come up with a solution in that 12 months.
Exactly.
Right. And at the last meeting, I'm sorry, at the last meeting, we talked about that and we didn't want to have policy by moratorium. And the city manager said they would be a policy recommendation back prior to the 12 months. So.
Right. So my, my recommendation is that we approve it and, and you know, if we want to fast track working on, which I think we need to either way, figure out exactly what we want to do quicker rather than later. Because this is a second moratorium on this issue. But I would advise to go forward with it now so we don't have a gap in moratoriums and have to deal with an issue of an application being submitted in between the two.
All right. The public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else with anything?
Mr. President, I do have a question. So, so what I'm hearing us say is that, you know, it's not like the, it's not like the development moratorium in that, you know, we have a real issue related to water that's, that's, that's makes it impossible for us to, to move forward really with some of these projects. This medical marijuana business, you know, the reality is, is that it, it's, it's, it's a part of our culture now. It's in our, you know, it's, it's, it's permitted by law and that for us to continue to push the, you know, kick the can down the road feels a little punitive for a business, a business owner that has or a property owner that has a real live, you know, opportunity. So I just want to be careful that we're not, that, that we are, you know, that we're, that we're diligently moving forward, that we maybe even commit to some internal deadlines as it relates to coming up with policy recommendations.
I would strongly encourage that as well, to come up with some deadlines and move forward. But I'll remind council, the reason we have this at all is, you know, right now under, under the old statutes, these would have to come for approval. And we don't have a provision that allows for medical marijuana treatment centers in the city. But the state legislature passed the law saying essentially that you can either rig, rate, allow them or not allow them, one or the other. But it, once you allow them, they can go wherever pharmacies can go. And they preempted us on exactly how we can regulate them. So that's why we wanted a moratorium, so we could analyze exactly what we want big picture to happen. Because we, the way our code is written now would apply to what can and can't be done based on the state statute preemption. So it kind of opened the door to allow some to come in with, with or without our direct approval. It just, if we don't take action, you wouldn't be able to turn some down. You would just have to take what was applied for if it's in the right zoning category based on statute.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval on the second reading ordinance number 1502-25.
I'll second it. And I do like the idea of the, say attorneys, let's, let's create a deadline to have something done on this too.
Absolutely. I have a motion from Councilman Burgess and a second from Councilman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
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 Saying nays, none, motion passes unanimously.
Business item 2.3 is first reading of ordinance number 1503. Ordinance of the city council, the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, annexing approximately 13.72 acres, more or less into the corporate limits of the city, described as parcel number 182622001009300000. In Zephyr Hills, Florida, in accordance with section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date in an annexation. This is a public hearing.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Todd, I'll hand it over to you.
Good evening, council. Todd Vanderburg, planning director for the city. At the prior meeting, Tommy Lee was here and presented the planning report on the subject property that's you see up on the screen. It's a good thing to be filling out this enclave here. It's in the county. So all the property you see on the west side of Chancy Road will now be in the city. So these next.
Orange, Todd, is all city?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, sir. And these next, this item and the next item, this is as Attorney Magger mentioned, this is for the annexation. And the next ordinance is for the future land use and zoning, which is planned for light industrial and industrial and the future land use. The other thing that Tommy Lee brought up, we were, even though we're not looking at a site plan tonight, we want to be very proactive on the transportation along this corridor, a lot of truck traffic. So there, there's another development to the north that abuts this property. And the staff has told both entities that there'll be a shared access to both properties. So trying to limit the, the access points on this major transportation corridor with the trucks and try to, you know, just good planning, good transportation planning, access management. So we're being very proactive on that. But yeah, a good, obviously just speaking on the future land use and zoning, we're very supportive of the, the industrial zoning on this. Another opportunity for abhorrence and taxes and jobs. So staff and the planning commission recommended approval of the annexation on this ordinance.
Thank you, Todd.
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this issue? Counsel, discussion? Well, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move approval of the first reading of ordinance number 1503-25.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Spina and a second from Councilman Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Todd.
Next items, sorry, Mr. President. Next item, business item 2.4. First reading of ordinance number 1504-25. Ordinance of the city council, the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, proposing amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, providing a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, changing from county IL to city IN industrial and the zoning designation from county AC to city LI, light industrial for approximately 13.72 acres of real property, located west of Chancy Road and east of the Zephyr Hills, east of the Zephyr Hills Airport and Zephyr Hills Municipal Boundary and having parcel ID number 18262200100930000, providing for repealer conflicts, severability and an effective date. It says a rezoning, so it's a public hearing as well.
And this is the same piece of property, Todd? Thank you. All right. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing.
I don't have any further comment unless there's any questions. Staff and planning commission both recommend approval of the future land use and zoning on this item.
Does anyone have any questions? Does the audience have any questions or want to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Counsel, I move approval to this item.
Second.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
I have, no.
Mr. Counsel.
I have a motion from Councilman Smith and a second from Councilman Spina. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Todd. All right.
Next item is business item 2.5. First reading of ordinance number 1505-25. Ordinance of the city council, the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, creating a new section to chapter 93 of the Zephyr, city of Zephyr Hills Code of Ordinances, section 93.03, establishing regulations for the keeping and harboring and maintenance of backyard chickens, providing for applicability, repealer, severability, inclusion of code and providing an effective date. This is a first reading, not a public hearing.
Okay.
So.
Did you have anything to say, Billy?
It's not a quasi judicial public hearing.
Just quickly, discussion took place on May 12th, June 9th, council meetings regarding the keeping of chickens. Council directed staff to draft the ordinance language, which is what's in front of you today. If you'd like, I can read through the bullet points. Nothing has changed from the planning report that was two weeks ago. Go ahead and read through them.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Keeping of chickens shall be allowed in, in only the following residential zoning districts ER, R1, R2, R3. No roosters shall be allowed on any property within the city at any time. Any property having live chickens thereon shall have chicken coops or pens on said property in the rear yard only, constructed in a manner to keep the chicken's house there and at all times. Each chicken coop or pen must have at least four square feet of space per chicken. Chickens shall be allowed outside the coop or pen periodically between sunrise and sunset only, so long as the same are properly confined on the property and impenetrable fence. No chicken pen shall exceed 50 square feet in area. The coop must be no taller than six feet from the ground. Any property on which the chickens live or allowed, on which live chickens are allowed, must be properly maintained and properly remove waste products and ensure proper vegetative ground covers are maintained at all times. Any property on which a live chicken is kept that has more than 100 square feet of defoliated ground outside the chicken pen or chicken coop area must be in violation or will be in violation.
Can I ask you, what, why, why is that in there? I guess about the 100 square feet of defoliated ground?
I think so there's, so they don't like. Just grass.
Essentially, so yeah, the area they're in doesn't just become a dirt pit.
That, it's just kind of an attempt to do that. I mean.
Oh, so they got to maintain it to keep the grass.
Yeah, I just wondered.
That's going to be tough.
What that was in there.
And that's where they're supposed to get bugs and everything.
They should have Saint Augustine grass in there.
We're not allowed to have Saint Augustine in the back per the Florida.
Water star.
Water star. There's Bahia in the back now.
It might be dirt, switched in dirt.
Well, that's the thing.
It encourages them to move the coop around.
Yes.
And I would try and keep them in a different area.
Move them around. Sleds are the way to go.
Yeah.
Thank you for reading that, Billy.
Oh, but you should do some more. No, no property shall have more than five chickens at any time. Live chickens shall not be slaughtered or processed for consumption on any property within the city. The coop shall be set back a minimum of 20 feet from side and rear lot lines. On-site sale of eggs or any chicken products will be prohibited. Requirements shall not be waived or varied. Regulations do not affect deed restrictions or covenants concerning chickens. Chickens will be removed after three separate violation events as determined by the code officer. That was written in there. I know there was a question. I think what we'll do is the first time they get a citation, go us to court. Sorry.
I thought.
Do you remember what was written in there?
Three strikes, I think.
Yeah, they, I mean, like Oliver, because they're going to get the notice of violation. They have 10 days to correct it. After that, they'll just get a citation and go to court and.
So the second time would be a citation in a court?
I think if they don't rectify it within the 10 days, then.
It's another violation.
They would get a violation if they, they would get their first violation if they don't come into compliance with whatever the issue is after the 10-day notice. Then any complaints after that for the same issue would be a citation.
Okay.
And if they have three citations that result in convictions, you, we can pull their, at the discretion of the code enforcement officer, we can pull their ability to harbor.
Yeah, do they have, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Matthew, but they have to come in and get documents, sign it so that we know where, who's got them and who's supposed to have them.
Correct.
To fill out an application with us, yeah.
So, and if they don't do that.
So if they don't do that, what we'll do is we'll hand, well, I guess it could be a violation or we hand them, here's the application. And the application is simply is a list of the rules. They sign it, date it, and then we have that on file.
They don't do it, you give them a, you know, 10-day notice of violation with the application. And then 10 days they haven't got their application filled out, you cite them.
Right.
No, we, and we do take into consideration that there's a bunch of chickens roaming all around right now. In other words, if, I, I can't see Joel going out and saying, these wild chickens that are behind yours. You could say, Charlie, you have wild chickens. You don't have a permit.
No, I mean, I think we would have to establish some, some kind of proof that they're his chick.
Yeah.
We'll go there at sunset and see if they run back into the coop that's in his backyard.
I mean, I think that's part of the problem now is we don't allow chickens. So they're just running around. People are feeding them in the backyards.
No, they are.
I think this may, you might see the street chickens disappear.
It'll be interesting.
Yeah.
Well, depends on how hungry we are. But anyway.
Not supposed to slaughter these chickens.
It was a joke. But anyway, do we need a motion for this?
We do. We need, we need a motion to advertise for the second reading.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I've moved to approve this item.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
One nay.
I think this is a step backwards. I think we're trying to improve our community. We're trying to improve that. We do all these special regulations and improvement plans for the CRA and our neighborhoods. And now we're going to allow people to have chickens. It's going to be, and it's going to be a headache for the building department. It's going to be a headache for code enforcement. And I think it's detrimental to the city. Make sense?
All right. We, motion passes forward.
I know. I got people calling. I want to have, I want chickens. I want chickens. I want my eggs are expensive. There you go.
All right. Moving forward, city managers report. All right, moving forward, city managers report.
Item three point one is the amendment.
Sorry, item three point one is the amendment to the Tina Joe's Cafe Management Agreement. It's, uh, the language is to remove the carriage house from that lease.
Pretty simple cut and dry. Just takes it out and reverts it back to us, and the remainder of the management agreement stays the same.
So, um, the, the rent has been current. Uh, they just finished quarter, was it quarter two? And that statement will be sent out here shortly.
So, Billy, everything's up to date?
Everything is up to date. They are current on their payments, correct?
May I ask a question? So does his rate, rent go down because he doesn't have the carriage house?
No, the carriage house, the, the language for the carriage house was that they were to rent it out and the city would receive ninety percent of the rent. They would receive two percent.
No change to the rent or anything?
Correct.
And then we're going to come up with a plan for how to use the carriage house?
That'd be nice.
Main Street meet there now?
Yeah.
Okay. That's where they meet, right?
Well, downstairs. Upstairs, yeah. It could be great for pop-up shops or anything like that. So.
Yes, we do need a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve this modification to the Tina Joe's lease, item, uh, three point one.
I'll second that, and I'm, I know Joe must know about this. I mean, he understands it's coming, right?
Yes.
He probably wanted that, didn't he?
I would think so.
He did, yes. All right, I have a motion from Councilwoman Wilkerson and a second, Councilman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, passing unanimously. Thank you.
The delay on that was.
Three point two?
Item three point two, civic record, inflammation and facility reservation online impact. Kevin's going to give an update on that program.
Kevin Weiss, Zephyr Hills Public Information Officer. Um, yes, just wanted to give a brief update on the online reservation system that we have. So right now people can go online and reserve Alice Hall, the Train Depot, Wickstrom Stage, and that's basically what we offer. And just wanted to show some of the data from the first year that we've had the program. So just going back from the year before we had the program, May twenty twenty three to April twenty twenty four, we had two hundred and fifteen total reservations. Alice Hall had a hundred sixty four of those and the Train Depot had fifty one of those. Then from May twenty twenty four to April twenty twenty five, there were a hundred and seventy seven reservations at Alice Hall, a hundred twenty reservations at Alice, uh, at the Train Depot. And the total number of reservations was two hundred ninety seven. So all told, there was a thirty eight percent increase in facility rentals between Alice Hall and the Train Depot. And the company Civic Plus, who we utilized to help implement the facility, they more or less promised that you would get at least a thirty percent increase in reservations, more or less allowing the system to pay for itself, and that's what we've seen so far. Just notable, uh, the Train Depot, it jumped from a hundred thirty five percent because there were fifty one reservations from May twenty twenty three to April twenty twenty four, and then a hundred twenty reservations from May twenty twenty four to April twenty twenty five. So, um, it appears that the system is working and, uh, we can always go in and update it and make changes. And the other benefit of it too is, uh, we use the program to house our summer recreation registration and waitlist, and it's also an online database for our other parks and facilities. So people may not be able to reserve the parks in other facilities that we have, but they can at least see what's available and some of the amenities and so forth. So.
Well, that sounds like quite a jump in.
Yeah.
In rental sales. That's great.
So.
Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, sir. So one of the things that during the, um, uh, the budget workshop that I wanted to talk about, and that is that, you know, if we're going to rent these buildings, then we have to make sure that they're in tip-top condition. And I know that the depot needs some love. That was one of the things. The other thing is that I reminded Ricardo that not everyone is comfortable using online reservations. And when I tried to make a reservation, because sometimes I test these, you know, I, I used C Click Fix myself and I use these, you know, different reservation systems. And it's a, it was a little challenging for me for, uh, from a user standpoint. The other thing is that we should be able to call still and get ahold of a real live human that allows them to make a reservation.
And people can do that, and we've had situations where people have called, they can't figure it out. So they'll come in and we'll walk them through it and we help them, or I should say Ricardo and Eileen helped them along the way. So, yeah, and, and we can always make, you know, it's good to hear that feedback where, you know, if it's a little unwieldy for some people, we can always make tweaks and adjust it as needed. But so far it seems to be a pretty good program that we put forth.
Increase, increase revenue, then we have the money to do the work that we need to do to maintain these special historic buildings. Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Mr. President, I, I think that's a great thing. I, and I think what you did too is, I would imagine there's a time savings by doing that too.
Right.
Somebody doesn't have to answer the phone, look in a book or do something online. So, I mean.
Yes.
The, more and more and more, we use those phones to do everything, to order food, to pay our bills, do everything. So I think any other opportunity we have to do this, we need to take advantage of while still keeping it available to call somebody.
Yeah, it's just another e-government strategy, if you will, and that's kind of the way that things are going. I mean, Pasco County has the same system. So many other Florida cities and counties have the similar program or like-minded program. And, um, just pulling up an example, you know, in the old way, you know, um, you have to come to City Hall and, and make a reservation. You'd have to sit with then Lori to, you know, pick a layout and do payment and all that. And, you know, what if she's at lunch or, um, what if she's out for the week? And just, because I, I looked back today at some of the data and somebody made a reservation on Wednesday, July ninth at eleven fifty two PM.
Right.
So you couldn't do that previously.
That's right. I, I mean, I think it's great. And, and I looked at it, it shows all the different layouts you can get. So it's, uh, you know, it's very good. That, I bet it took thirty minutes to forty-five minutes to sit down and do that with somebody.
Yeah, because I remember, you know, seeing Lori sit with, you know, some of the folks there, so.
That's great.
And I think the, just to add on that, add to that, uh, real quickly, I think the Train Depot, um, that, just having everything one-stop shop in that system probably increased the visibility for the Train Depot. People see that Alice Hall isn't available, or they didn't know that the Train Depot was up for rent either, and it's cheaper too, so.
It's awesome.
How, thanks. How many people does the Train Depot hold?
That's a good question. Um.
I would say about fifty comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the kind of neat thing about it is they use it for weddings sometimes because then people, they can use the back stairs as a stage, and then everyone can sit down at the bottom and they can have like, you know, a little dais for their, for their wedding ceremony. It's quite nice. And then there's the playground there for the kids and, yeah, we like it.
So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate that. That was great news. What do we have, three point three? Billy, three point three? Oh, sorry, madam, sorry.
Sorry, Gail's presenting three point three.
So I haven't, I have no luck. So I'm here tonight to tell you that our park equipment is over budget.
Thanks.
Yeah. What we're going to do is, I think, we have the parks divided up into the five parks. The equipment and the layout that they are providing, um, we just got this today around one o'clock. Shane has reviewed it. I've looked at it. We both agree that, um, they have overdesigned Depot Park. So we're about four hundred thousand over budget. Depot Park is eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. So we'll, we'll take that money out of there, but I wanted you to look at it, and the price includes everything. Rep Services will handle the installation. If a sidewalk needs to be poured to get to the ADA, uh, equipment, they'll handle it. They'll handle everything. So we're going to go back and look at it. We'll find that four hundred thousand, but I wanted you to look at it and I wanted you to look at the price and what we're doing. So in case you say, I really like those two, a large choo-choo train and a small choo-choo train on Depot Park, let's keep it. Or I want you to put more here or more there. So these are layouts for you to look at. It's got the pricing in there as well. We're going to work on getting it down to our budget and we'll come back when we have it under budget and ready to go for you to approve. It is budgeted. Funds for the park equipment is budgeted in this year. So we have the money. You've already approved it. We just need to spend it.
Is all that info in here?
All the info is in there, in that packet.
So, May, so you have the money to move forward with the other parks?
Yes.
Everything?
Yes.
And then we'll have a little surplus because you still had money left for Depot, but you're not going to be able to use all right now.
Well, I have, we have one point six million dollars budgeted for, uh, the five parks.
Okay.
So the budget or the, if you look at those packets, all five parks came in just at two million. So we're about four hundred thousand over.
So you're just going to take Depot Park out at this time?
Or a portion of the work.
We're going to take a portion of it.
And then there might be a few, like ten percent out of the other parks, maybe.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're going to look at, so Gail and I had the conversation today. As she said, this packet, we had a draft of this packet last week.
Yes.
But the packet you have in front of you, yeah, the, the packet that you have in front of you came in today. We were able to talk about four thirty. So what we're going to do is we're going to look at the entire packet. Um, Depot's the one that jumped out because one, of the price, and two, it appears to be much larger than the playground that's there now. Um, so we're going to take a look at that, but we're going to look at every playground, every piece of, of equipment that's in that packet, to see where that cost savings can come from.
Can I, can I ask a question too? Is there any way that we could look at, um, trading out the zip line that you have over at Shepherd's Park to maybe the Veterans Park where we can, I, I just, I'm not sure how much this Shepherd's Park's going to be used as opposed to some of our other parks. So.
We can certainly look at that. Um, the, it is a neighborhood park. Shepherd's Park is a neighborhood park, and right now the only thing there is a basketball court.
No, and I understand.
So if we have more there, maybe the neighborhood kids will use it more. And that was the idea behind putting, uh, equipment in all of the parks. We have them. We need our, our residents to use them. So look at it. If you have some questions, give me a call. Um, I know we, we want to get it in budget, and I think we can make it by looking at the numbers. But again, we got it this afternoon. Uh, if you have any input, let me know.
When, I, one more question. When would you start doing this?
This year. We're ready. I mean, as soon as.
Like next week?
So, so the goal is to have this, to have this packet back in front of you. The, the goal was to have it tonight, get approval from council and move forward with the ordering. So what we ask is that council, take a look at it. If you can get it to us by the end of this week, as a staff, we're going to look at it this week. Try to make the changes and have it back on the next agenda for the twenty eighth for approval so that we can get it ordered.
The prices that you have in front of you are good for thirty days. So I need to get approval for it and get it ordered, um, so that we, we have the money budgeted. Let's spend it.
So you need approval from us to.
Not tonight.
I know that. To get started before we can, even the ones that we can, that we already have budgeted.
So you're asking for feedback by end of the week?
That's right.
Hearing.
Yeah.
All right. I think this is great. I support it a hundred percent behind it.
Me too.
As fast as we can.
Absolutely. And the reality is, is that if something doesn't work, then we'll know the next time we don't want that, you know? It's, we don't, if we do nothing or we keep thinking about it or talking about it or designing it, it's just not going to get done.
That's better than what's out there.
That's right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gail.
All right. That was mayor's announcements.
The only thing I, and I'm sure we're going to talk about this at the next meeting, but I know that, uh, all the department heads have been working on their hurricane preparedness. You know, we just, I think we all just want to make sure everybody's ready because I have a hard, bad feeling we're going to be hit early this year and we just have to be on board. And I, I know that we talked about that the police department would be heading feeding, you know, I want to make sure that where we thought about, where's the food going to be if you buy it, where's it going to be refrigerated, those kind of things. So I just wanted to make sure. I know you guys are all working on it and I appreciate it, and everybody's put in some good plans, but we probably need to be ready sooner than later.
So I want to ensure mayor and council that staff is prepared. We've got this. Our staff knows what they're doing. And as a storm comes, um, we will, we will fine tune, um, our plan according to the type of event that's coming towards us. You know, at the end of last season or last event, we had conversations about the food. Um, and so that, that has been addressed, uh, both, you know, one department, two departments, entire city. Um, and we, we have partnerships with the local grocery stores, um, restaurants, um, that we're able to call and, and, and get the things that we need. You know, one of the fears that I have personally is we buy all this food and it sits for six months. So we really try to prepare, you know, unfortunately, or I guess fortunately, you know, it's not like a tornado. It's, you know, we get stalked by a tortoise, you know, for, for ten days, so we know what's coming and we can prepare, um, for it. You know, so we have seventy-two twenty-four hour, um, or seventy-two forty-eight twenty-four hour plans for preparation. Like any storm, if, if, you know, if it's, if it's a Milton coming, we send staff home to prepare their homes, um, so that they're as secure as they can be there to be able to come home and, and work their tails off for the next X number of days. So, um, please, you guys relax a little bit. We've got this. Staff has it. And we will respond accordingly to the event that, that hits us. Hopefully it doesn't hit us.
Thank you.
And I was.
I promise you, we got it.
And it's on tape.
It's on tape, but we got this. And, and we understand. And listen, I know you guys have been preparing, and I want you to know I appreciate that. And I think that you have your lessons learned from last year and that each department has their lessons learned and we know not to do some of those things.
So, so I will tell you, one of the big takeaways from me, um, from Milton, and, you know, it was a, is, it was a storm that I don't think any of us anticipated. And the relationships that grew out of that with, I'll say with Pasco County specifically.
Yes.
Makes me feel a whole lot better, right? They're a lot bigger than we are. They have a lot, you know, and we have the same access to the resources. But to be able to go through Pasco County and, and the utilization of Web VOC to get the equipment that we need and knowing, you know, one of the conversations that we had is, um, Larry Alcady at the county is the operations manager for Public Works, and they pre-order pumps or generators, well, not generators, pre-order pumps and hoes, and it's sitting in Pasco County. So, you know, if there are things like that that we need, we're able to get that, and that's something that we've learned during this, you know, the past event, so.
Good. Thank you.
I would just like to add that, um, I went to that Pasco County workshop when, when they did that rehab, and it was the same day as, there was a conflict. Everybody was at something else. So I went to that because I thought we should be there. Somebody from Zephyr Hills should be at that meeting. And I got a copy of the presentation and it showed what Pasco County had. Well, I think we, you gave it to everybody. The, the notes of what kind of equipment and staff they had pre-Milton, what they did during and, and what they've done since. So I shared that with him. He shared it with you. So I think we have a good idea, especially he does, of what they have and what they're doing and how. And you learn as you go.
Yes, absolutely.
Hurricane of a lifetime.
We hope we don't ever have that again, but thank you guys for getting prepared. That's my bottom line. Thank you.
Look what's happening in Texas.
Oh, I know.
And that wasn't anything like a, a category four hurricane. So.
Yes.
You know, my God, they got a couple nights of heavy rain and it destroyed the place, so.
Yeah.
And, and to.
And a hundred, two hundred people are dead. There's at least that many missing.
So a part of that, um, today, myself, chief Nathan, um, attended the first day of, of the two-day training, uh, with the sheriff's office, um, incident, you know, incident, um, response. And really the focus is how do you, how do you get your communications and relationships with the, our lifelines, right? The fuel, the food, communications, things like that. Um, so it's a nine to four training. So we're, we're taking those trainings. And again, I, I go back to, I think, you know, utilization of Web VOC is, is huge, and, and that's something that, um, you know, that was, that was one of the areas that we marked of needs improvement. And so we're all aware of how to use that now. We all have our passwords. Um, and an example of that, I know council knows this, but when we needed a pump at Ninth Avenue. And an example of that, I know council knows this, but when we needed a pump at Ninth Avenue, it was put into Web VOC, and we had it the next morning, it was here, so it works.
I'm glad to hear that y'all, that really, when you sent that text this morning, that y'all are doing the training, I, I was very glad to hear that, and I think it's a great idea to get ahead of all this.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. And city manager?
Only thing I have is, we did, we, I should have brought it up during the, the moratorium discussion or the public hearing on the MMTCs. But before we direct Matt to do the research on, do we want the cultivation? Kind of need to know, do we want cultivation? I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's why, I don't think it's smart for us to say, yeah, go do it, and then if we know we're not going to, we don't want cultivation, because we put the moratorium in place, but to, sorry, to separate cultivation from dispensaries.
Right. Right, but I'm, what I'm thinking is, you know, I mean, part of if he's doing research, he might show us things that we don't know about it, that we may be in favor of, or it may make us not in favor of. So, I think he's going to have to do some of it, so we have a better idea of really making a decision do we want it or not, or, and why.
Right. Okay.
I also would, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to hear of other communities and smell-wise, out on that industrial quarter, we're already going to have bakery smell, that's going to permeate, permeate into all those communities over there. And then do we mix another smell into that mix, and, and, you know? So, those are things that I'd like to see what, what, yeah, it might make everybody hungry, but buy more cookies, but those are the things that I wondered, because as I've looked at things, you know, that's a concern of mine, is, is this, you know, I, I'm not against marijuana, listen, I have no problem with that. Does, is it have a place in our city limits? I'm not sure it does.
Well, that's the one complaint that I have gotten.
Okay, well, we don't want to hash that out now.
Yeah, yeah, and I just want to say that I've talked, I've talked at length to these people, I talked with Mr. Patenato at length. The reality is, is that these people are not, are, are becoming more and more savvy. They know what's offensive, they don't, they're not trying to slide anything under the radar here. The reality is that, that this is considered a manufacturing, essentially, it's not, it's not like a hemp agricultural use, we're getting full tax base, we're getting, you know, potentially, you know, 400 high-paying jobs, there is no smell, they have, they spend, they spend millions on HVAC systems, I have a friend who designs and installs those for that purpose, you don't smell it. So, and, and the truck, truck traffic is much reduced than it would be if we had a, if, if we had a traditional, you know.
I guess we're going to.
A DUCAS supporter, but, okay.
We're going to discuss it at another time.
All right.
All right, and Matt, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, sorry, I said.
Uh, city attorney?
Yeah, I'll just say that, really, the research on, on what we can and can't do with the codes, I'll lean on Todd and what they want to propose, I just, the question I think Billy was getting at, Mr. Poe was getting at, is whether you want us to dig into whether we can even separate cultivation or not, whether that's an option, and I'll look into that and find an answer is what I'm hearing, but.
It's their precedent, have they done that in any other community, or, that's what I would want to know.
Yeah, I, I have concerns about that being possible, but even if it has, has it been, you know, is it meet the, the statute, or has it just not been challenged? That's another thing.
Do you think it will be challenged?
I, I don't know, I just, I don't, the way I read the statute is, you can't separate the two, but I, I, that's just my first look at it, I haven't done a lot of research on any analysis on the statute or application, because I just haven't got that far into the separation part of it yet.
I can't imagine that there's not some legislation that's in, in the process, that's in, in the works, because to me, it just seems like two completely different things.
Doesn't make sense.
It, you know, retail, and in the, in the heart of your, of your city, and next to your schools, and people out there advertising, that's a little different than a quiet facility in, in an area that's, that's out of the main part of town, that's generating jobs and revenue.
I mean, I would agree, except, except for the definitions that define what American Marijuana Treatment Center is, that includes cultivation all the way through, were created by the legislature and put in the statute that was passed that preempted us, so it was like a new thing. That's why I have hesitation and concern about it, whether that's being seen as an issue in the state level, and whether that'll be addressed, I, I haven't heard anything about that, but I, I'd like to look into it, but.
All right.
Then, last thing is, I want to congratulate PHSC. Billy and I were joking, we're both graduates from there, it's PHCC when I went, I know it had to be when Billy went, then, I'm trying to, and then Councilman Smith, you don't even know is the Bobcats, and the answer is, wasn't Bobcats when we went there, it's conquistadors. That's all I got.
Thank you. Uh, city council comments, Councilman Burgess?
Um, just real quick, like to follow up on some of the discussion from earlier. So, on the pre-construction meetings, you know, we bring all entities together, which is great, but I think we need to continue to keep them all coming together in meetings, because as the Cossack Road thing showed us, we talked to Duke, Duke talks to Pasco County, Pasco County talks back to us, and just going around in circles, and can we get someone to go out there and take a front-end loader and just put a pile of dirt out to make it look like we are doing something? Yeah.
No, because then that would imply.
So, I was, I was.
Not now that it's on the record.
So, I was told on Friday that they will have, they should have equipment on-site this week.
I mean, if we want to talk about a project that's taken a long time.
Yeah, I had that on the list. Sure you did. So, that's, there should be equipment on-site this week.
Yeah, that, that's all, and I was wondering when it became the Bobcats too, it kind of surprised me a little bit, so anyways, that's all.
Yeah, they did some rebranding for their sports teams a few years back, as my understanding.
I just have, I, I'd just like to do one, I'd like to congratulate the city attorney, I saw on LinkedIn that he's now also the city attorney for Indian Rocks, so.
You weren't supposed to see that. Yeah, yeah, we're excited about it, they, they are facing some challenges, and our firm was selected to hopefully help correct some of their issues and help them out, so with my city attorney experience here, I was brought in on the team to help with that.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, councilwoman Wilkerson?
No, nothing for me tonight.
Councilman Smith?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Matt, don't forget about us over here when you go to the beach, okay?
I don't know why everybody says that to me, but you're like the 300th person to say that to me, I feel like, but.
They do have nice beaches, eh?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. You don't have to worry about that, they got a whole team of litigators that are, that are manning the, the team for Indian Rocks, so.
Oh, anything else, Councilman Smith? And I have nothing, uh, do we want to take a five-minute break? And then we'll start the seven o'clock meeting. Uh, councilman adjourned.
This conference is no longer, this conference will now be recorded.
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, July 14th, 2025, 7:00 PM meeting. Madam, would you do the roll call?
Councilman Lance Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Council President Charles Proctor.
Here.
Councilman Steven Spina.
Here.
Councilman Ken Burgess.
Here.
Mayor Melanie Monson.
Here.
City Attorney Matthew Maggard. City Manager William Poe Jr.
Here.
All right, seeing that, first of all, I'm going to open it up for citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to the council on anything? Seeing none, we will move forward to the regular meeting. I'm just going to turn this over, there he is. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to the city manager.
Holy cow. All right, sorry, user error here. So, ad valorem, I don't know how to get it to, can you hit present or slideshow? I think that's what it is, sorry. Yeah. There we go, perfect. There we go, all right, thank you. Um, all right, so the ad valorem, the aggregate assessed property value is, what is that, 1.7 billion? Just over, the proposed mileage rate is 6.25, which is what our mileage rate currently is. With a 6.25, the anticipated ad valorem that would be budgeted would be just over 10.5 million. The mileage rate table, as you can see, the, the rollback rate to collect the same amount of revenue as we did the previous year would be 6.0848. What the proposed rate this year is to remain at 6.25, which would show as a 2.71% increase.
Mr. Poe, if you could just speak up just a little bit, please, thank you.
The rollback rate and the proposed rate's about, with the 95%, about 280,000, is that right?
2 point something percent, yeah.
The rollback rate would be 10, uh, 10.
10.8.
10.3, and the proposed rate would be, bring in 10. almost 6. So, is that right?
I'm, I'm seeing yes.
Yes.
Just a question on that, so it says the increased dollar amount, 964,000?
Yeah.
That's the total increase.
At the rollback rate? Okay. That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what you see here are revenues, as you know, the city is reliant, not just on ad valorem, but on penny for Pasco municipal revenue share, local government half-cent sale tax, the gas tax, and the communication service tax. Unfortunately, the numbers that come from the state are often delayed. So, the numbers that we have currently are the penny for Pasco, and that's estimated to be 4.2 million. The municipal revenue is 928,000, and you see both of those are increases. The local government half-cent sale tax is a slight decrease of roughly 15,000. The gas tax and the communication service tax are, we're still waiting for those projections to, to come in.
Can I ask you a question, it's just, on the penny for Pasco, did they do that based on population? Is it like a pro-rata, or how do they do that?
Um, I don't, I, I don't know how, so, well, there's a contract, we have a contractor in agreement with Pasco County, to where the school board gets 45% of revenues, Pasco County gets 45%, and then the cities split the 10%. So, we receive, I think it's 3.92% of that 10%.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Correct. How the state projects what the revenues are, that I don't know.
Yeah, I wonder how that three-point whatever, our, our portion is figured, is that changed?
That's, that's on population.
Okay, so that makes sense.
Believe we, they look at that every five years.
Billy, what about the local government half-cent tax? I noticed it's a little bit less.
So, it's a slight decrease, again, I'd have to, I'd have to do some research, make a phone call. Those are numbers that we get from the state.
Yeah, that is interesting stuff.
I have the definition, but I don't have it with me of, of how that's calculated.
Tell me something when you get it.
Um, this is a, a slide to show that in 2020, the fund balance was roughly 2 million, and in 2024, it's just over 11 million. Those are all undesignated reserves. Kind of the big project, I know there was a conversation on that today, and I will go quickly through this, just because next meeting, we'll have a financial advisor in here, kind of talking about this and getting some direction from council. So, the city yard complex project, Public Works, or, excuse me, governmental is about 17 million. Parks, Public Works in general, 17 million. Parks is, is 1.4 million, water sewer utilities is 7.3, sanitation is just over a million, and stormwater would be just over a million, for a total just, just short of 28 million.
Can you explain, what is Public Works governmental?
Have to have the finance director tell me that one.
Okay, well, parks is broken out, so I just wondered, I knew, I figured it would be streets, but, and it would be administration, but what else would that be? Equipment maintenance? Okay. That's a lot, I mean, I don't understand how it's divided up, but okay.
So, so it's a 60, I gotta, 60, 30, 10 split, 60 is, is general, 30 being utilities, and 10 being sanitation. So, on the right, it's kind of a, a funding, the funding sources, the financing sources. But again, we'll go into greater detail next council meeting on the 28th, when Jeff Larson is present. Are there any questions you want to ask? Okay.
It just sounds like we just need a little bit more breakdown on what PW governmental includes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep. Zephyr Park renovation project, again, estimated, right about a 15 million project. And you see to the right, the funding sources will be potentially CDPG grants, that was a 10 million ask. We did receive previously a 550,000 state appropriation, which those dollars will be spent shortly, and then state appropriation that we just were made aware of, that we received. And those, that agreement is in our email box, we're working on really replying to that with the information requested, and that's in the amount of 2.6 million. And then there's the general fund reserve recreation account, and at 3.8 million, that's the, the account that was designated as a Zephyr, the nursing home fund, or the proceeds from the sale. Doing some research, finance doing the research, that meeting, it said it was to be used for recreation, and so it sat there. And so, while utilizing these reserve accounts, it still has a balance of 25% of operational dollars per our policy that you'll see next meeting. Kind of the big part of the, of the budget is the capital listings, which I know you cannot see that, it is attached, you guys do have it either electronically or hard copy. And I will go through those, I don't know if you want me to walk through each of those.
That's these, right?
Correct, that is those. If you want, I can, again, in the parks, it's city yard, Zephyr Park, historic building renovations, purchase of vehicles, general improvements, some equipment to, to maintain the parks. On the water side, it's meter and backflow replacement program at roughly 1.7 million, well, 10 improvements, inventory for the water, well 3 and a well 11, generator replacement vehicles. drinking water well rehab, some SCADA updates and maintenance, new cameras for the well sites 2, 3, 4, and 5. On the wastewater side, there's a digester rehab for 1 million, gravity sewer line rehabilitations, it's ongoing program that we do. Sledge holding tanks, 1 and 2 rehabilitation, the lift station, major rehabs, sewer manhole rehabs, which is an ongoing program, correct? New equipment, crane truck, some odor control at lift stations, and then inventory as well. On the streets side, the hotspot, the intersection improvements, shows 2 million dollars in there, I think that number maybe, we'll have to look at that, because there was 2 million in this current year, and we did design, and, so I don't know that 2 million is carrying forward, or if it's supposed to be a million for construction, so we'll have that conversation. On the sanitation side, it's a roll-off truck, a 30 yard and a 15 yard side loader vehicles. What we're looking at is going away from the blue bins that you see, the current recycling bins, the little tiny bins, the 18 gallon bins, what happens is those get wet, we put them in the, into the truck, and then we take it to the transfer station, and we have a contaminated load, we have to dump it on the, on the floor, and it gets burned. I will reserve my comments on recycling in Pasco County because of the waste of energy, I think you'll, you can.
Well, it's recycling in a way anyway.
We, yeah.
I mean, if you burn it to energy, then it's a recycled product.
Yeah, my, my personal opinion is, it's a waste of time to do the Wednesday recycling, it all needs to be burned.
I know, and it is a bit, remember, we're the ones who get stopped in the Walmart, I'm sure you do too. The reality is, is that people want recycling, they want to believe that we're improving the quality of life for our grandchildren, and, and so if we're not doing it right now, then we, we need to figure out a way to do it better.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, the problem is the cost is, is the thing, and I agree, everybody wants to, it's a feel-good thing. But in reality, we just as good to burn it, and we get the, the energy.
Bill, does it wind up being a cost to the city for us to recycle, is there, does it cost us money?
The only cost for us is, is the running of the trucks and, and, you know, utilizing the fuel and all that, but there's not additional pay.
What kind of bins are you going to?
So we were going to go to the 65 gallon, so very similar to the green bins that we have now, the Z carts that we have, be a little bit smaller, yeah, it can come up. So currently, we have 95, 95 gallon bins are the Z carts, and we go to the 65s, it would be the automatic pickups with lids to hopefully keep the stuff right.
Yeah, Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director, just a quick note on that, I don't want to get too much of the time for my coworkers back here, but we're looking to be more efficient with our recycling, because right now, we use the 18 gallon bins, and we have some customers that may have up to four bins, and when we go out and do the recycling, we use a three man crew, we have a driver and two workers on the back. When we go to these 65 gallon carts, similar to our Z carts, we'll be able to take one truck out with one operator and do the work of three people, and the two other people that would normally be picking up can be doing something else productive.
And then do they take them straight to the, from there, does it have to go back to your yard?
No, we, we, when we dump into the truck, it's not co-mingled with solid waste, it's just recycles, recyclables, and then we take it to the hand cart road transfer station and dump it out, then it becomes property of the county.
Right, then they can, we felt good, and they can do what they do.
Right, Councilman Spina and I, a few years ago, we went and tried to get a little revenue for the county, and didn't work out well for us, did it?
No, but we still feel good about it. I recycle.
I'd like to do a tour, I might do, I might try to schedule a tour there one time, just to go see the recycling.
If you think recycling is bad here, you should see what they do in Germany, unbelievable.
Shane, and I know we spoke about it before, and I'm in favor of those, the other things, but my concern is people are going to miss bringing their garbage out on a Monday or something, they're going to try, because they're going to think, oh, they don't know what's in those bins, they're going to try to put garbage in them. Should we come up with some kind of a, an ordinance or something that if they're abusing the recycling thing, that, I don't know if we can find them or something, because yeah, because, I mean, honestly, that's, that's going to happen a bunch, I'm afraid, because, because they figure that, no, you can't see inside the lid, like right now, they can see it and stuff, so, I mean, I'm all for it, but I just think that maybe we might want to consider, you know, what are we going to do about the people that abuse it? I think we need to look into that a little bit, because otherwise, you know, you're going to take a load out there, and they're going to reject the whole entire thing, because somebody filled the garbage can up with.
Well, they'll reject a contaminated load, and City Manager Poe mentioned wet cardboard, if it, like tonight, if this was a recycling was, if it was a Tuesday night, we were going to pick up our recycling Wednesday, and people put their 18 gallon bins out with cardboard, and it rains like it did tonight, all of that load that we'll pick up that day when we take it to the transfer station is a contaminated load, they take it up the hill to the incinerator and burn it. So at least with the carts, they have lids on them.
Right.
That would keep the cardboard dry, and we'd have to work through what you're talking about, the sneaky people, but we have sneaky people with Z carts too. And when the cart dumps, we have a camera on top of the truck that, we can see what's going into the hopper, so if it's.
That's what I'm saying, if you get a habitual abuser, we need to somehow, you know, I don't know, do something.
And you might be able to put, I mean, look into putting the rules right on, a couple of, a number one rules on the top of your cart. Only this, this, and this is allowed in this cart, so they know.
That's what we do when we deliver recycling bins, we have a door hanger flyer that goes with the bins, has all of what we pick up and what we don't pick up.
It could be right on the side or on the lid or something.
No number five plastics or whatever.
Right, yeah, that's what I would look at, sorry, we're getting into, so we're getting in the weeds.
Yeah, but that's, that's our rationale, is to become more efficient.
Good. Thank you, Shane, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's for the brick and mortar for each of the, of the departments. So we'll go back, clean that up, break it out, so that it, it makes more sense, so I just wanted to, to make that correction. Okay, so we were at the gallons, so again, for sanitation, just more equipment, additional roll-off dumpsters. Again, there was a question, I think on, on here, there's, and there's several of these, it says Parks, Building, Sanitation, Parks, Streets, Sanitation, Building Improvements, those dollar amounts that you see in there, those are placeholders, we do not plan on spending that money. But if there is something that breaks that has to be replaced, AC, toilets, something like that, between now and when the City Yard complex is constructed, we have funds in there to be able to make those improvements or corrections. On the CRA, I'll go quickly, because I know you're not the CRA, and we'll have to go through that at a different meeting, but the renovation of Clark Plaza, continued land acquisition. The backyard project is, is back in this, in this upcoming budget sidewalk development, and the 6th Alley enhancement. On the street side, it'd be the annual resurfacing, and we have a program that tells us which streets kind of meet the criteria, the worst, we start with those. Continue with sidewalks and vehicle purchase. On the police side, there's been conversation about a training facility, and so we'll, we'll continue those conversations, radios, the, some building upgrades, the roof has reached an age where it needs to be repainted, resealed, equipment. Airport, fuel inventory for resale, I know there's other items, we'll, we'll make sure that those get added to this one. On the stormwater side, a new street sweeper is needed, stormwater infrastructure improvements, and we are currently looking as a staff, getting pricing on doing a, a study to find out what a stormwater fee, what an appropriate stormwater fee would be to charge throughout the city. And it'll help us get our projects done quicker, so there's also funding in here for the design of 20th Street and 4th Ave, the drainage issues that we have there, and then also a 6 inch stormwater pump and discharge hose. What is not in here, then we'll have to add, again, you saw the state, or the appropriation for Zephyr Park, there's also appropriation for the 9th Ave Pond, and so, once we get that agreement, we'll have, we have Kimley Horn ready to go with that design and get that project rolling, so that we can get that completed, to create some additional capacity there on 9th Street. On the police, again, some acts on, just continuation of agreements that we have. On the wastewater side, the sledge press conveyor, rehab of that. Sorry, stormwater, things are broken up a little bit on here, Sea Ave, the culvert, the, the outfall from Zephyr Park underneath Sea Avenue, that needs to be replaced. One thing that we noticed during Milton is that the wing walls around the culvert are not the best of shape. And so we need to get that designed and get that constructed, get that repaired. The fleet maintenance side, again, placeholder for, for building improvements, but then some machines, tire changing machine, hydraulic hose crimping machine, diagnostic scanners, plasma cutters, welders, things like that, utility billing, there's a funding in there for a rework of the customer service area, to try to create some additional space and maybe reduce the waiting room area a little bit there. On the police dispatch, there's consolidation in Central Square, which is a program that we use, we'll have to continue with that. We have a salary study that is programmed for next fiscal year. Purchase of library books. We have City Hall improvements, again, a placeholder, should anything be needed. Golf carts at the airport. In the building department, potential for converting a storage area into office, and also server replacements, so that is the projects for fiscal year 26. There's another attachment that you have there, that is for fiscal years 27 through 30. And I'll, just because of time, I will not go through those at this time. Any questions at this point? Just, just a slide that we'll have for this year or next year, with the fire department merging into Pasco County, the fee, the cost for this year for fiscal year 26 is just at 176,000. Next year will be our, our final payment, and that will be 226. So I don't know why it jumps up, that was Pasco County, we asked that question, and it had something to do with their budgeting and the way they were riding it off, so to speak, and so that's the number, those are the numbers that they gave us.
I just have a quick comment, Bill.
Yes, sir.
I'm so glad, it looks like after this payment this year, we got two more payments and whatnot.
Correct, yes, sir.
That's good, thank you.
I had a couple of things, I had met with Billy and talked about, and some of these, I guess, you know, we had talked about the Alice Hall Community Center, will that be talked about during the Zephyr Park conversation or budget conversation?
Ah, Zephyr Park.
Okay, then, we got the hotspots. We talked about the equipment building at Cruz and Field, so that'll be, you'll, you'll be adding that, right?
Correct, we're going to schedule, we're trying to get a meeting scheduled with Damian, and find out exactly what their needs are, so that we're not just designing a building to what we think they need.
Okay, and then I wanted to talk about the idea, we're not really getting into employee stuff at this meeting?
Um, I haven't gotten to it yet.
But I mean, well, we are, but I mean, that's different stuff in terms of, that's not like positions and things, right?
Yeah, just personnel requests.
Yeah, so I know, I know, yes, we can talk about a city engineer.
All right, I want to talk about a civil engineer for the city. On staff, hired, not a consultant.
Well, I, I, I want, I want, so I've had a conversation, and I, I know the cynical part, and all of us will say, oh, you talked to a consultant, and of course, they don't want you to hire an, an on-staff person, because they could potentially be the, the on-call. But I want council to be very careful in your thinking, that if we hire a civil engineer on staff, that we're going to save all kinds of money with, in consulting fees, because it's going to be a one-person show.
Sewer.
Well, I'm not saying it necessarily saves a lot of money on consultants, but it'll give us the ability to control somebody's hours. When they, we, we approved in the consent agenda, I think, nine or 10 contracts with consultants, that we can have our guy. We have people that need to review drainage retention ponds, projects we're doing, we talk about it all the time. And, and we can bill it at a different fund, CRA or utilities and different things, but it's our person in-house, that we're not calling somebody in North Carolina to try to get something.
Correct.
You know, it's on our dime, and it's on our time, so that I think that it's a start.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we, we're a 100 million dollar business, and we're, everything we do, we farm out to somebody. Half of what you said today, it was, we'll call Kimley Horn, we'll call this one, we'll call that, well, why don't we have somebody in here that we can start developing into what we want?
We, we can do that, we can have that conversation.
I just want it on the list, though, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Really, I don't want it to get forgotten.
No, we have it.
Maybe we can also look at talking to some of the people who have one and see how it worked out, some of the cities, yeah.
Yes.
Did it work out, and, and what did they do?
They have one in Temple Terrace, they have one in Plant City, I mean, they have them, and they would come, and they would do small road projects and different things. The, the engineer here could probably do the hotspots without going out to bed.
Yes.
And that would be worth it.
And they have utility projects that we, they were doing, the guy would come up.
I think there would be plenty of work for them to do.
Yeah, be a great resource for our Public Works Director, who basically essentially acts as a project manager on all these big projects, yeah.
Okay, just so it's in a discussion.
Yeah, so it's in there, I think there's, yeah, I think there's more conversation that needs to be had on that. Sorry.
That's it, I think.
Okay, all right, well, that's your world's head. Any other questions at the moment?
I, I just have one, on the streets projects for sidewalks, we only have 200,000 in there for sidewalks for this year, are we not going to continue to try to build up our sidewalks in our community? I was.
There should be a million dollars in there.
We, we will, we will look at that number.
Yeah, because I thought that we were going to consistently try to do a million dollars worth of sidewalks till we get our sidewalk system up and where it should be for a city.
But, so I think.
Just like we have no unpaved streets in the city of Zephyr Hill.
Exactly.
Nice to know that we have at least one sidewalk on all the streets.
I, we need sidewalks.
So, so what we're doing currently is, we have design occurring on 6th Avenue, Airport Road. I've asked Public Works to look at Beltran and Tangerine, Wire Road, and Fort King? Daughtry, Daughtry. And so to get those designs done, Tangerine, Beltran, those are city roads, neighborhood roads that connect 5th and 6th Aves to Veterans Park.
Right.
There are streets in between those that are really neighborhood traffic, you know, so I don't know that those need sidewalks, per se. So we're looking at those using this budget's dollars to design those. Wire Road, Daughtry Road, well, Daughtry's ours, but Wire, Fort King, those are county roads, but they need to be done, so we're going to use city dollars to design them, and then hopefully talk, have a conversation with Pasco County. Geiger, Pasco County is supposed to be taking care of that in next fiscal year.
Next year.
So we did not put any dollars in for that.
And this year's Public Works that you sent out, we did have a million dollars in it, and it was the Airport Road, 6th Avenue, Tangerine, Beltran. So was some of that being carried over, did we? Did we, because we talked about that one in memory.
Yeah, so, so, right now, we have Airport, Airport and Sixth Avenue, that we have the design costs that have come out of that, plus the construction costs. And then, Beltran, Tangerine, Wire, Daughtry, those were all added recently. So, I don't know what, right, so I don't know what funding we'll have available to carry forward from those. So, that'll be a determination once we get.
Yeah, I just, I just know when we talk cost, 200,000, it's only gonna do a half a mile of sidewalk. That's not gonna go very far.
It's about. Billy, so on the wastewater side, we were gonna have some generators put at the lift stations and stuff, and I know we had a grant for some, how, where, where are we at on that, on those?
So, those, there were 10, we had a HP, HMPG grant, hazard mitigation grant that we received, 10 generators. I think that was approved last meeting. We were gonna utilize RCM to purchase those, but the grant documents required that we had to go to bid. So, we had to have bids, bid specs drawn up and I believe that was, was that awarded? Okay, so next, we should, hopefully next meeting, we'll have award of bid and then the first meeting in August, we should have award of contract. So, we're waiting.
Do we kind of prioritize the ones that we're gonna get the generators? I know we can.
Yes, I don't know which ones they are, but yes.
I'm assuming because of the, after.
They were already selected. So, yeah, the locations are already selected and we were ready to purchase those generators, but the grant language that came out said that we had to go out to bid and we couldn't just use a continuing services contract. Personnel request that we have, code support specialist, police sergeant, sanitation driver, and accounting specialist reclass of that.
What's code support, help me?
It's a building department.
Building department.
So, like a building tech, I guess, or building.
With Jackie? So, you have the two now, so it'd be, so it'd be a third person up there to alleviate?
We used to have three.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
It's probably a good idea because Jackie may be retiring.
No, she ain't gonna retire.
Jackie's gonna work another 20 years.
Yeah, she ain't gonna retire.
But we have to have succession planning and we have to have overlap during the lunch hour. You know, we're gonna talk a little bit about customer service, that that's our job is to be in, that we don't shut down entire departments at the lunch hour for a reason,
Any questions? Discussion items, it's always the big one, pay increases. And so, what you have in front of you here is what it would cost for a 1% raise for each of the funds. So, general fund for each 1% increase would be roughly $75,000. CRA would be $1,300. Utility fund, $23,000. Airport fund, $4,500. And sanitation fund, $6,500. For a total of, to the entire budget would be about $110,000 per 1% increase for employees.
A 1% raise?
A 1% raise would cost the city $110,000.
You're just saying what it's.
I'm just saying, this is not, yeah, this is not a recommendation that employees are only getting 1%. So, please, employees understand that. This is just a depiction of what it would cost per percent. So, the conversation still needs to be had, what percentage are we going to give to employees? But just know, if you give, at 1%, if, if it's 3%, it's gonna be 330,000. If it's 5%, it's 550,000. And so, that's the conversation that we need to have. But this was just so that you understand what the impact is per percent. And that would be, those numbers are as if it was effective October 1.
So, you think you're gonna go for a 4%?
Um, I did not say, I did not say anything. You're putting those words in my mouth.
He said 1% is 110,000.
I got it. I'd like to see more than 4%, cross that bridge.
Yeah, that, that's a council conversation.
Okay. So, at our next meeting, you're gonna present us a draft budget with all of this in it and then other administrative stuff you've got in there.
Correct.
And then, are you gonna propose a staff?
I can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think you should.
Yep, I will.
And then we can adjust it.
And maybe it's tied to our, our projected revenues, I mean, you know.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, and see what the cost of living increase is for this coming year so we can build it off of that, so.
Well, you know, it's always a good idea to take good care of our employees for sure. And I think we try our very best and I think we do.
Well.
Zero inflation, I mean, everything's moving. We may not even need to give any raise.
Well, and last year, last year, we.
Okay, okay.
Eric, do you have that, do you have that egg back there?
Yeah. Right, that's back there.
Just add a zero.
All right, so, so we'll have that.
I'm not gonna get any credit for it, but you know, just saying, it's the right thing to do.
So, meeting schedule, August 1st, draft budget has to be submitted to council. And so, that's a formal budget, you know, just the draft version. And then, we will have, continue to have budget workshops as needed. The first reading will be September 8th. The second reading would be September 22nd. Did we verify those dates do not conflict with? Okay, so, so the September 8th and September 22nd dates may change because reminder that we cannot meet the same night as Pasco County or Pasco County Government or Pasco County Schools. So, those, usually it's the second date that changes on us, but we'll, we'll see, I'll verify those dates. Any questions? I know there, there was, from the visioning session that we had, council gave projects and ideas that you would like to see. Those are included in here and we'll go back and verify that those are all included as well. Are there any questions at this point? Suggestions, ideas, things that need to be added?
To bring up one thing about, real quickly, just that, you know, as we're building new parks, as we're building new sidewalks, as we're doing all these things, I think we need to make sure that we have the staff available. And, and that means, you know, pretty much public work staff, but also code enforcement staff to make sure that all these places are maintained properly. Even when we require developers to build sidewalks and fences, you know, we need to make sure that they maintain that because if you have sidewalks and different, and parks that aren't maintained and you can't utilize the equipment or things are dead and dying and, and, you know, unattractive, then it's a waste of time.
Right.
So, I, I think that we need to maybe look a little bit at some staffing levels this year in addition to what you showed to make sure that when we're building these parks and doing these improvements, that we have the staff to be out there to maintain it and keep it to a certain level so that, otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels, I think.
Ms. Jones, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So, Dr. Spind, it's very interesting because this is number one on the items that I've discussed with the city manager. Dedicated parks and maintenance staff, daily checks for equipment condition, trash pickup at the parks, vegetation care and maintenance, notification of public works with dangerous tree, the conditions of trees in the parks, cleaning water fountains, providing dog water bowls, restroom cleanliness and repair and conditions, regular paint touch-ups and steam cleaning the grout, things like that in these restrooms, replacement of water fountains, toilet seats, faulty valves, sidewalk and pavement repairs or restriping of play courts. And, and I think we should do something like, you know, have a prize for the most improved or, you know, really kind of, kind of, you know, reward those people who are doing a fabulous job in our departments, you know. And I just think that, 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 that's just a short list of things that we could have a group of people who do nothing but maintain the parks or go around and maintain the parks on a daily basis.
I just think, you know, we need to make sure we have enough people on staff to do work.
Right. I mean, if, but if you have a dedicated group to do that, then we know, we know who to talk to when it doesn't get done. That's, that's part of the issue. The other thing is hotspots, I think we've talked about that. We need to have some progress and deadlines and documentation that we're communicating with the parties that have control over the roadways that need attention. We talked about, you know, the medical marijuana moratorium and having a deadline for legislative recommendations. Have we followed up with Zephyr Lodge regarding the improvements to 12th Street and North Avenue? Because I noticed that there's been some, I think that's effective. I think that the crosswalks and the, and the, and the, you know, the striping and all those little bump, bumps that you put on the side, those really have helped a lot.
Yeah, I had a member there contact me and I've talked to Billy and then I talked to chief. They wanted a copy of some records and they had complained about a drainage, a drain on the 12th, on the east side of 12th Street that our streets crew went out and looked checked and I'll get with back, I'll, I haven't got back with him, but I will get back with him and tell him that, you know, we've followed up on those things.
That's great. And then the last item that I had was parking. So, you know, one of the things we've talked about with the CRA plan, you know, the Methodist Church parking lot, you know, we have this FOE building, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that area. There is city parking per se and a portion of that, that we're, there's a cross easement agreement or whatever, I don't know. But maybe that's part of the Sixth Avenue, but those are gonna be the things that I'm gonna be talking about with the CRA director when we get to that place.
Yep, so.
I'm sorry, what, Methodist parking lot again?
So, there was a conversation with the Methodist Church about potentially taking over that parking lot and paving it and creating a paved parking lot. There were some issues with the negotiations and the days that they wanted reserved and things like that and the city expending dollars and not having a guarantee. I mean, it's the Methodist Church, chances of them selling it are pretty slim, but, you know, that the city would be able to recoup some of those dollars if they were to sell in X number of years. So, those negotiations broke down. The FOE, to my knowledge, there is not a cross parking easement or agreement there right over here, yeah. And so, one of the conversations that we had was trying to obtain that, but they're not willing to split it out at this time and the cost, well, my understanding, the price that they're asking. There's a reason why it's still for sale.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're working on that. So, we do realize that there are parking constraints downtown and I know that CRA Director's been working on trying to find locations to, to improve the issue down there.
But if we, if there's a public parking, or if there's a private parking lot, but it creates, you know, potentially a hazard, there's a few go back there, I mean, it's, it's, they're big, huge potholes and it's, and it's a eyesore and, you know, if we put the screws on them for improvement of the, of the conditions. Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna become a code enforcement issue that'll have to ultimately addressing it.
Billy, a while back, we did something with the First Baptist Church in the parking lot behind there. What, what did we end up doing there? What was the? We did vote not to?
We did a project on Sixth Avenue, Sixth Street and Fifth Avenue with Mr. Peoples.
Right.
And we paved their parking lot so that, and they said we could use the public, that was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that was more than a couple of years ago. That was more than, that was more than six years ago. But the, 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 just within the last six months, it hasn't been a year. There was a conversation on the Baptist Church, or it wasn't the Baptist Church, it was across the street from the Baptist Church.
Well, behind there, something behind there.
And, yeah, ultimately, the decision was not to purchase.
Pay the property taxes. Take, yeah, take the taxes, yeah. I knew it was something to do with property tax at one point, it couldn't have been the church, so.
But if we're going to, if we're going to improve that section of, of Highway 54 West or Fifth Avenue extension, that, then, you know, we should be able to at least control the condition, the landscaping or whatever, so it's all part of that streetscape. Nothing further from me, thank you.
Yeah, that is, yes, that is part of the Fifth Ave improvements is the landscaping, both center median and side medians.
Thank you.
Mr. President? And I know when we were talking about the parks overall, I guess, was the park plan, it mentioned a park director in there.
Yes.
Do we have anything planned for that? And the reason I say that is because you start thinking about all these things and Shane ain't got enough time of the day, you know?
I agree.
So, I mean, as you layer all this stuff.
I agree.
It just.
I think it's the time to really think about it. Just think about it and look at the options out there. It's, you know, I think it's with all of our park improvements and the maintenance that needs to be done, it's definitely worth something to look at.
Well, and I think when we were having the discussion, they were talking about the recreational side of it as well.
Yes, absolutely.
As events and, and program things. And that's a whole nother.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think the, I think the parks director position would be more of the implementation of programs.
I mean, he could be overseeing, take some load off of Shane, too.
Yep. Could be.
Unless you still want.
You don't want to help.
Well, you know, you look at, if you look at that graphic, it shows such a big chunk of that is public works and that, you know, maybe breaking it down a little bit could be a little bit, you know, more manageable for, from a staffing position, too.
Anything else?
And I'm assuming we're just gonna continue to evolve this thing, so. Cause I've got a few things, but I'll just get with you.
Okay.
You wanna do it now?
No, no.
Okay. Are you done, Bill?
I am done unless there's any other questions.
Does anyone else have questions for the city manager?
We'll wait as we see the full budget.
Go through them.
All right, well, on that note, then.
Well, we have the debut of the HR Director.
Oh, oh, yes.
Coming on up here, I've been waiting on you.
Didn't mean to skip you.
Good evening, Sandra Emerson, the HR Risk Management Director. I have provided you tonight an overview and comparison report as requested. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. As requested, a remote and flex work schedule. A comparison review of report flex schedule was conducted in your pocket that I created. Additional information along with the side comparison that we have up here for your review. Input was from the FPHRA, which is the Florida Public HR Association, which entails about 538 members and we also contacted local entities in our surrounding area. Overall, we received about nine entities, as you can see on part one and part two slide. There was one that actually is conducting a pilot program and that would be the city of Lakeland. We had seven that have remote work mixed in with about four on being on some kind of flex schedule. I think there was a 410, there was also one that was unique on the next slide that was from an out-of-state location. Some of the surrounding entities that we contacted with no remote or flex work were Newport Ritchie, Port Ritchie and Temple Terrace, because I know we get compared a lot to those surrounding entities. We overall found that our remote work was typically based on job responsibilities, technically and, sorry, technology and security, department approval and flex schedules that included the 410s. We also found that universally, there wasn't, you know, an exact match between all positions between remote work and flex schedules. There wasn't really a universal information that were received across all the roles. So, some of the common challenges as you go to, sorry, thank you, no, previous slide, sorry. Some of the common challenges you'll see also on the slide there was technology was an issue, monitoring productivity, communication and collaboration gaps, as well as data an issue, monitoring productivity, communication and collaboration gaps, as well as data security risk, employee isolation, equity across all departments, operational coverage concerns. And some of the common benefits, as you see up here as well, was employee satisfaction, retention, reduced office space and utility costs, emergency preparedness, a better work-life balance and recruitment tools, along with reduced environmental impact. Some of the common information that were received from the nine entities were mainly remote work was not offered to police, fire, utilities, public works, library services. So I'll leave you with that for questions. I know that there was a ton of information in your packet that you received that had a little bit more information and details in regards to each entity, ranging from Atulac County, City of Delray Beach, City of Friendswood, City of Lakeland, City of Palm Bay, City of West Palm Beach, City of Winter Park, Pasco County and Town of Lady Lake.
Before, before you jump in questions real quick, if I could just introduce, because I was asked, who is this guy that just walked up here? We have Barry, so two of our new hires, Barry Lilly and Anthony Tony Burns are both IT employees. Barry's been with us about a month now and Tony's been with us a week. So, so IT is full. So just want to introduce those.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Will and Will, I apologize, I.
I was covering him.
So Will, what is it?
I said I was covering, I was in the way.
He's in our planning department, so planning department is full. Actually, I believe every department in City Hall is full at this time. Code enforcement officers have been, have been, I'm sorry, the one who's been running the meeting.
I know, I was going to thank her at the end of the meeting.
Eileen is here. That's the problem with introducing people, is you're going to miss some of you. So Eileen is the Assistant City Clerk. We also have building, the Building Inspector and the Code Enforcement Position. So everybody, every department in the City Hall.
City Hall's the HR Assistant.
Except for the HR Assistant is full at this time and Library as well. So, awesome.
Correct.
You know, I just, when I was reading these, I had talked with.
Is Mike's not working?
I had talked, I spoke with Assistant County Attorney for, let me start over. I spoke with an Assistant County Administrator for Pinellas County and he had been the City Manager in Safety Harbor. And Safety Harbor didn't have flex work or hybrid. And they went to, he went to Pinellas and they did, and he said he didn't like it at first, now he thinks it's great. So, but what they did was they worked departments that, you know, like some, sometimes some departments had, everybody was in the office on Wednesday. And then some people were off Monday, some people were off Friday, some, you know, they were Thursday and Friday, they worked different things. So I think in government, it's possible to do it. Now, county governments are so much bigger than us, so they have a lot more, you know, I mean, like you said, you finally get everybody here and then if half of them are out of the office for two days a week or something, then it, it's an adjustment period. But I think that there's a way to do it. And then you have, then I asked him though, but what about, you know, we have so many people in the field and obviously you can't have flex work if you're a police officer or utility.
Right.
You know, yeah, I'll be back Friday, you know, you can't work from home and put in a pipe. So you have to figure out how you can, sometimes they went to like 40 hour, 10 hour days, four days a week, so then people would be off three day hot weekend or during, in the middle of the week or something like that. So I think if you do do a remote or flex policy, you know, in in the administrative field, then you have to come up or look at something with how you do it with the other departments that are out, you know, out of, out in the field.
Yeah, if I can, if I can interject, I don't know, I think I've been, I'm not real, I'm not supportive of work from home because of some issues. I will speak specifically for myself. I'll find 10,000 other things to do at home than to sit and bang away at a keyboard on a computer. What I, and I think just based on conversations with the department heads, they have the same feeling. They're not supportive of the work from home, but what the departments have, department heads have is the leeway to do a flex schedule, to work a 410 or to take off here. Because one of, and I will say, one of the biggest concerns I have is in the smaller departments, if somebody's off and then somebody gets sick, but then also as a council member or a citizen comes in and wants to meet with somebody and it's, oh, they're, they're not here today, they're, they're working from home, that doesn't always go over real well. So I'm all, I'm all for, you know, working with the the employees and it's based on department needs. For example, Kevin Kelly, previous Planning Department employee, lived in Sarasota, so he would work 410s and was off on Fridays to try to just reduce his travel time. And part of it was is he knew if he left at five, he still wasn't getting home till eight, so if he worked till whatever, six or seven, he still got home at eight. So department heads have that flexibility. I think the PD has some of that. They have some flex schedules that they're utilizing now. I think in wastewater, they have flex schedule moved around. I was told that potentially the water department does not like going to 410s because some people enjoy getting off at 3:30, half and half, okay, I wasn't told about the other half. So there have been conversations that have been had, you know, so I think like CJ said, there are some employees who would love to go to 410s. You know, I mean, who wouldn't want to have a Friday off or a Monday off and have, you know, three days every weekend? But there's also other employees who have other commitments, you know, they decide jobs, things like that, that they would prefer not to. Not that we have to cater to that, but I think that's something that we have to look at as we're looking at, you know, if we're telling employees, hey, you have this side job that, you know, you're refing football games, but you're not getting off till six o'clock now and you have to be in, you know, Winter Haven by seven to ref, you know, what kind of, what message are we sending to the employees? But, so, sorry to interrupt.
Bill, are you saying?
No, you're good, no, no.
Are you saying, are we offering both four days and eight, and five days? Eight hour days?
So, so right now, what we have are five eight hour days, typically PD, they work, they work a three on, three off, three on, two, whatever their schedule is, a little bit different.
Two on, two off, three on. What I'm getting at, is that, is that something we could do? Could we offer them either or to maybe, I don't know?
Yeah, so, so for me, I'm not, I, I don't, I don't want to dictate, okay, planning, you're working 410s.
To the department heads, yeah.
Yeah, the department heads know what needs to be, you know, what their schedule is, what their needs are in their department and to flex them accordingly. When I worked here a while ago, Todd and I had, he was the boss, so he got Fridays off and I had Mondays off, but we had, we worked 410s for a little bit. I didn't think it was real fair, but.
That was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that was just a couple of years ago. But I think is, I think the department head needs to look at their department and say, hey, it, it makes sense, we can flex some things out, you know, and what we do is we try to work with the employees as well as, hey, I have a doctor's appointment on Friday or my kid has a, you know, whatever, graduation or award ceremony, can I work through lunch next two days? Sure, work through lunch, you know, you don't have to take time. But, you know, the department heads come and say, hey, this is the plan I want, we talk about it, makes sense, doesn't make sense, and then we go from there.
I believe the closest one on the comparison report would be the Town of Lady Lake, closest as far as employee size.
What, what town?
At the very bottom, Town of Lady Lake, who actually does the 410s. They've been doing it, um, over by the villages.
Okay.
They actually have been doing it since 2013. So as far as size wise, they did have, you know, I asked a few questions about how that went when they first started. They did have, you know, some morale issues in the very beginning because there were those, you know, in certain departments that weren't able to do the 410s. I think eventually they've kind of figured it out along the way and made some changes, but they seem to be doing fine with that.
Well, it's good to see how governments do it because, you know, we're all the same type thing. You know, it's pretty hard for us to compare ourselves to an insurance company or someone like that because, you know, they can, you know, they can do a lot remote that we can't. And then there is, you know, Teams and Zoom and things like that where you can get together. But I think a lot of these things are, I think, like you had mentioned, they're the way of the future and a lot of the younger people are coming into it to where, you know, they're, they get these kinds of things. And I think this has always been an environment where we worked around people if they needed off for school events and, you know, doctors, like Billy said, things like that, so.
I think one of the reasons also why some of them do not want to work the longer hours is because of childcare, they're only open until five o'clock. So that was a common issue.
I think the same thing. I think the city for a long time has kind of worked with their employees when it comes to things they need to get off for. But I would, on the 410s and, you know, a long time ago, when I was working construction, we would always try to, well, I'm going to work 410s. Well, it just never worked out that way. We worked 410s and then Friday, some contractor would want something done and we end up working another eight hour day or something. So I think if we, if we do something like that, we need to make sure we stick to a schedule because the idea behind the 410s was now you had a chance on a Friday to do your doctor's appointments, you know, like go get insurance or whatever you're doing. So I think, I think it, and I like, Billy, I like the fact that you leave it up to the different departments, but I would caution you that, you know, it's kind of like an executive decision on your part because you do have to look out for those things like you're talking about. It's like, well, those guys get to do this and we don't. I mean, we don't want to create animosity either amongst the different departments too. But I know 410s, I was really, I was really for that when we did it, but it never really worked out right.
And I know I've kind of talked to, I feel like I've been negative on the whole thing, but I mean, there, there are potentially some benefits, you know, where we would have later hours for the people that are working would be able to come in, you know, for instance, UB, instead of closing at 4:30, maybe open till 5:30, you know, and then, you know, the field crews that are doing turn on, turn offs, instead of cutting out at 3:30, you know, they're there for another hour or two.
Charging our customers a premium.
Right. So there, so there are some advantages to it, you know, but again, I think we just need to look at it holistically and go through that.
And let me just, so you're, you don't like the hybrid model?
I personally don't. You know, I think there's just a lot of things and I'm not saying that we can't work through them, but my feeling is, as a government, we're expected to be here and be present for the public. And then just the technology, the monitoring, you know, things that, a lot of things that we don't have in place now that we're going to have to get laptops, all the infrastructure, security through the IT. Again, people are doing it.
Right.
We don't have it in place and that's something we would have to work through.
Sure.
You know, to be able to monitor that the employees are producing.
Yeah, well, I mean, and I just say, just because you're in the office doesn't mean you're producing.
Hundred percent agree.
You know, it doesn't matter. The way you know is, did you finish that work that I asked you to do? And you look at the production, I mean, it's not hard. And I just go back to my daughters, they, they were great students and their husbands, all but one either does total remote or hybrid. And they said they will not take a job that's not that way anymore. And most of their friends are like that. So my take on it is if we don't look for the opportunities we have, we're going to miss out on some very, very, very good candidates because that's what they're looking for. Now, working through all that, and then another thing, I have a runner who works for Pasco County. She works in the Parks and Recs. She broke her, her arm somehow and her remote ability to work has kept her in a, in a house. So, I mean, there's some things that are good about it and we've got to get out of the mindset. I mean, I would be of the mindset, well, if you're not here, you're not producing. Well, that's not the way the world's working now. It doesn't work like that at all.
And if you're not producing, then take that away from you and put it in the office.
Right. And I'll tell you what, they won't produce there either.
Right.
So, I mean, that's the way you tell, somebody says they're going to do the job or they're not going to do it. So I'm, I'm just saying, if we want to be innovative, if we want to, and we'll have people leave to go to that, I bet. I bet we'll have people that leave us to go. And by the way, thank you for getting all that together. I sure appreciate it. But, um.
Yeah, I have more, but I just tried to summarize it up. I mean, it's all right here.
But I just feel like that's the way this, our world is going towards. So we can either try and get on board or just, you know, we need to, it's kind of baby steps. I know we're small, but there's some back office stuff that we could certainly do and, and, you know, heck, sometimes, sometimes you put a person in an office with another person and they're both unproductive because they don't like each other. Or if you had this guy here.
You know, I get a lot more done with it, I'm not around it.
If you have somebody at the house, when this person don't like them, that can work out too. So I'm just, I just think we've got to explore it or else we're going to, we're going to be sorry down the road, I think.
Councilwoman Mooks.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of comments. I agree with what you're saying is that the truth is, is that the world is going this way. And for those people who can't work these flex hours, then maybe they get, maybe they get rewarded in additional pay or whatever. You know, the bottom line is that there's, there's a price for everything and to have that flexibility, I have found that my employees will take less because they don't have to commute back and forth or they don't have to do, yeah, it's a quality of life issue. And I can see when they're working online. I can see when the projects are getting done. I can see when the emails are going back and forth because they copied me on anything to my clients. So, you know, I, I do think that it's, that it can be successful in any environment, including municipal. What, one other thing I just want to say regarding this memo that dated July 14th, I noticed that you have made some pretty good accomplishments, your department has. One of the things that, just a suggestion, and that is when you have goals and objectives, if you make these SMART goals so that you actually set deadlines for yourself and you identify whose help you need, whether it's IT or whomever to get the project done, to get the task accomplished. I noticed that you mentioned PIO helping you with these creative ads, you know, it should be nice to see an example of that. So if you would, you know, the next step with your report, the next time you do one, I'd like to see that level of, of commitment because you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to add a couple of things. So I do two days in the office, two days at home, okay? Since the hurricane hit, because I was doing four days in office, you know, but when the hurricane hit and took out our building, I had to work remotely the whole time. I'm going to be honest with you, I'm a workaholic, but I am much more productive at the office than I am at home. There's much more distraction at home, so I tend to work a longer day because I'm distracted throughout the day and I have to get up and go do this, go do that. So, you know, you're definitely going to have to make sure that the work is being done. And the other thing that I noticed is, you know, a lot of mine is answering phones and talking to people. I find when I'm at home, if I'm, when I look at my, my monthly, I answer the phone 10 times more when I'm in the office than I do when I'm at home because I tend to be distracted by something else. So, and, and I'm a workaholic, so make sure we have measurable things if we end up doing that to where they're not wasting their time just sitting at home and, you know.
That's funny, that's the opposite for me because when I'm sitting in the office, that door is open, people are poking their head in 900 times a day, I don't get a darn thing.
Really? And I, I have, I have all kinds of stuff at home, but, you know, that's okay. That's all right. And then 410s, you know, I mean, I did that for years, but you get to, you know, the one thing that you have to make sure is that there's not a whole department that's off on Fridays or this or that, and how do you make it fair? So I know you work through all of those and there'll be, there'll be pluses and minuses to everything, but, you know, kudos for looking at some options.
I think you'd have to have the right people and Councilwoman Mooks has brought up a good example of it. In my opinion, if I, if I had a business, somebody wanted to work from home as opposed to working at the office, then I would be, I would offer them less money. I mean, you, that, to me, that's, that's part of, that's part of your benefits package or whatever, is be able to work from home. So, I mean, that's an option too, but my, my main concern is on this is I think we're exploring it because we're having a hard time keeping employees, we're always having to hire people. I think the people who could work from home, we don't have a problem with those guys, you know, I mean, like all the IT guys, they could probably all work from home, but I don't think we have a problem with the, with the IT department. It's in some of the labor intensive ones where we always have the problems and there's no way they could work from home. So, I mean, this, there's a lot to consider and it's this, and like I said, I think it's an executive decision on the City Manager's part, but one thing I will caution against too, and I know it's a, it's not quite the same, but we had a pandemic where all the school kids were at home and we seen drastic drops off in their production and stuff and I talked to people working, so there is, I mean, yeah, there are some people that could work from home and they're going to, like you said, Councilman Mooks, and you're going to be on top of things, but I would say for the vast majority, it's not going to be that way.
Yeah, your grandkids pop over when they know you're home and they're out of school every day, you know.
And you're right, but the type of, we're talking, I'm talking about millennials, so.
Right.
They're not, don't have grandkids.
But they're going to have kids.
They have a dog.
They're going to have kids at home all summer long. They're going to have their dog. Yeah, that they have to walk four times a day.
I mean, they can, I, I'm telling you, that's what they want.
No, and I get it. I get it. I know they want that.
And I, I don't like it, you know.
Hey, wouldn't I?
But, you know, I mean, when, when, when you work here and the doors open, people sit down, they chat, they talk. They're not talking about the next planning project.
They're not.
They're just shooting the bull and, you know, and that happens all day, and that's good. I, it's good to get things off the table, you know, clear your head a little bit and do things like that. But sometimes I think we're talking about apples and oranges. You know, I think that, I'm just saying, I don't want to do this tomorrow. Let's find three people to go remote and, you know, kick, kick it off. But I, I think it's something that, and I think you've got a great start here because you have really looked at it and how we could go about it. And then I think, you know, we're going to get hit with people that want to ask about that. And some positions are going to be available to do that.
Sure.
And I think it's, you know, as we progress, we want to keep up with what's going on.
Thank you.
And like I said, that was great, your report.
Yeah. Can I ask one quick question? On the Friends, city of Friendswood, Texas, what was the 90/80 with alternating Fridays? Can you explain that?
So, that one, actually, they will work one Friday and off one Friday. I think that was suggested internally by another staff member.
Okay.
That's basically what they do, which is.
That's why you don't go into big details.
Right, yeah.
Definitely different.
Yeah.
So, they're off every other weekend. And then this, the wastewater treatment plant, they have different hours and shifts because they have to man certain hours and staff certain hours. So, they have a variety of different things too. The, just the nature of the beast because of the.
Yeah, when you and I did 410s, I, I liked Wednesday off because I could get doctor's appointments easier and that, you know, all those different things during the week easier. So, everybody's got different ideas.
I call Fridays.
Yeah, well.
And you have to make sure when you do do that, that then they're not called, they're taking a doctor, an hour's doctor appointment on Tuesday because.
Yeah.
Some will try that.
Mr. President.
Before we close, I wanted to thank Sandra because she also had a nice inclusion in there of the different things that she's changed and that's improved employee morale. And I, I don't, as we go through it, I mean, it was very, very good, and I know you're going to continue to do that. So, I think it's, I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, like the golf course event you did.
Yeah.
I like the, the new employee, and you invited us to the next one, which is a nice thing.
Employee connections.
We can see people because, you know, I was here this week a couple of times and I saw Barry, but I had no idea who he was, you know.
Is there one next week?
And I.
I work with him, and I still forget to introduce people, so.
Mayor, you came to one of our employee connections. Did you like, did you enjoy that?
I, I would love to be at them when you have them. I, just let me know.
Yes. Yeah. It's in my, in your inbox.
Yeah, not to prolong it, but those employee connections I think are really important because there's a lot of times, especially here at City Hall, that the employee does not work in City Hall. I, I try to meet them in their orientation day, but I tell them, I may not see you again till the Christmas party. You know, so to have a quarterly luncheon where all the new employees get to come and the director for each of those departments come, and you get, you know, 30, 45 minutes to just kind of talk and get to know each other and learn something about each of the employees.
That's good for morale, absolutely.
Billy, you and I have sat in the office numerous times talking about things we can do like this. And I know Sandra has, just like Councilman Smith said, put on a bunch of these events, which I did miss that one. I wasn't here, but, but I heard, I heard it was really great. So, and I continue to do that. I think that's a big part of, you know, helping out too. And I would definitely like to come to one of these.
I was, I happened to be down here, remember the job fair you had? And I was like, what are all these people doing here? And I was amazed at the amount of people who showed up for that thing.
We'll be having another one this year.
Good.
Do we, do we have any more questions for Ms. Sandra?
You're doing a great job. Hope you can get a new employee soon.
I hope so too.
That right person's going to apply any day.
I hope so.
Talk to Billy.
Offer him a hybrid job.
I had one, I had one perfect employee for you, but it wasn't high enough pay. I'm telling you.
Well, if we have no more.
Increase.
Those are yours. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Great job, Ms. Sandra. Well, do we have anything else, Billy? All right, well, I'm going to close it. What? Go ahead.
Do we want to schedule a meeting now? Do we want to get the budget and look at it?
Would it be better for us to get the budget so we can look at it before it was scheduled? Or just get it to us before the schedule?
You're talking about a date in August.
In August. What date are you thinking of, Bill?
I do not have a date.
I'm going to be gone most of the month of August.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
16th to the 30th.
But I will be at every council meeting in August.
So, so you will have, so you'll get the budget on the first, you know. By charter, you have to have it by the first. So, that gives us, you know, if both of you, or two of you are out, the second half of the month, you know, we can get it the first half.
Well, I'll definitely be here for any of the regular.
And I'll have, I'll have all of my information to you in advance.
So, I think, so just a reminder, we have a map meeting, I believe it's August 7th. It is hosted here.
I'll be gone.
We're working on that. We're working on the location, but it'll be, ends up for Hills.
When is it?
August 7th, I believe it is.
I'll be gone.
Oh, August 7th is the map meeting?
Is the map meeting. We have the Florida League of Cities meeting, the 14th, 15th, 16th, I think it is. And then reminder that Thursday evening, we have the Zephyr Park meeting.
This coming Thursday.
This coming Thursday, three days from now.
What time?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Covington Farms is in new ownership, so it might be available.
Somebody.
That Covington Farms, did I tell you, or did somebody tell?
Yeah, we.
I want to get with Sandra after I talk to Sandra.
For the Christmas party. Y'all, y'all got, because we can, I'll, I'll send you his number, Brent, because he said he'd love to have hosted up there, and it's pretty close.
Where's that located?
It's on Fort King.
Oh.
It's a half a mile closer than the Big Red Barn.
Yes, it is.
I'm just kidding. I don't know how much closer. I'm just kidding.
It's a lot closer than that.
It's a beautiful venue.
Well, if there's nothing else, I'm going to close this meeting.